The party started.
We are recording, Mr. O'Brien, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm laughing at myself. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hopkinton School Board meeting for Thursday, February the 4th, 2021. We have a full board with us here this evening with Norm Gupel, Rob Nato, Andrea Folsom, Seth A-Frame and myself, Jim O'Brien, and we're joined by Mia Richter, our school board student representative, and also by Michelle Clark, business administrator, and Steve Chamberlain, our superintendent of schools. Thank you all for joining us, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Steve, do you have a picture for us this evening?
Yes, it's coming. So, so I wasn't able to get to Harold Martin in time for the, I was over there at four, but you see the Harold Martin? So this is the office, new entrance and the addition. So we're getting there. Obviously, there's no flag, so I do have a picture of flag. But next, next meeting, but it is, you can really see how it's going to blend in and you can see where the sections are. So we're making great progress. But we decided, can you see a flag now?
Sure can.
All right.
That doesn't look like Hopkinton School District, but we'll go.
It is not. It's a national park today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll get back there in the next meeting.
Thank you, Steve. So we are meeting again this evening in fully remote fashion. We are able to do that because of the emergency declaration and emergency orders by the governor, and those emergency orders allow for public bodies such as the Hopkinton School Board to conduct our business fully remote with no physical location. And we do have the ability for attendees to participate in our meetings and to listen in to our conversations. When we do that via Zoom, so there's links to Zoom, and then we also have a telephone number where people can call in and listen in. All the other provisions of RSA 91A, which is the open meeting guidelines, will be followed this evening, and that includes minutes of the meeting available following the meeting as per statute. We will be doing roll call votes for each vote this evening, and so it's a little bit different if you've attended a public meeting before. It takes a little longer. But that way, we ensure everybody is, everybody's vote is recorded. If anybody's having trouble with the links or the phone number, and I know there's a number on our website provided that you could called if you're having any difficulty. So with that, I am going to pull up my agenda. I would ask if there's no objections from any board member that we pull out of order, one of our agenda topics, and I would like to pull out of order under presentations and staff reports, the introduction of the superintendent nomination, if that's okay with everyone. So I hear no objections. And so what I would like to do is turn things over to Mr. A-Frame to talk about the process that we've been undertaking in order, well, through our superintendent search. Once Seth has done so, then I would ask for a motion for the nomination of our candidate. And then the board can can, each board member, if they so choose, can reflect on the nomination. Then I'd ask for a vote, and then we'll ask our nominee to step forward and say a few words. If that feels like a good process, I'm going to turn it over to Seth.
So Jim just did the fancy way of saying tonight's the big reveal. So I want to spend just a few minutes before we have the big reveal to just talk about the process that went on to get us from where we began to where we ended. So we began almost a year ago when I came to my first school board meeting, and at the end of that school board meeting in a non-public session, I learned that the superintendent would be leaving. And then a few minutes after that, I learned that I might be asked to chair the selection committee, which was a lot for someone to take in at their first meeting. And I would say that in the beginning, I was anxious about that prospect, but I will say that where we are now, it has been my favorite aspect of the year serving on the board because it is a forward-looking project, project and process, unlike COVID, which we hope to get passed and budgeting passes that we hope to get passed. This was sort of something to really dig into and celebrate and think about all that's gone great in the district over the last many, many years under Steve's leadership and where we want to go next. And that's, that's actually a really fun process. So let me explain how we went about it. The first and truly most fundamental decision that we made was to engage a consulting firm to help us with this process. When Steve was promoted into this position, we promoted internally, and that didn't require consulting. I wasn't around back then, but sounded like there was pretty much unanimous view that that's the way it should go. And so, you know, along a nationwide search was not required, but it was this time, and we needed help in that process, and we got lucky that we got really, really good help. So we hired the firm of Hazard Young, which is a national firm, and what's, what matters, of course, is not the name of the firm, but who you get. And we got two outstanding people. Monica Brown was a superintendent in New Jersey and had just tons of insight and was super organized, which kept the trains moving. And Dave Wolk had been the Commissioner of Education in Vermont, a superintendent and president of Castleton College. So he brought tons of New England connection to the process. The board decided early on that we would not limit our search to New England, that we would conduct a nationwide search, and we did do that, although as you'll see when we get to the end, we found our candidate close to home. We had candidates from around the country. People who made it past the first round were from Texas and Illinois and Pennsylvania. And so, so that was exciting as part of the process. So the process began once we got ourselves organized with a long series, with a series of many, many town hall Zoom-formatted meetings in which we sliced and diced the town into really as many groups as we could think of, both within the school community and outside. And that was on purpose because we wanted to get as broad a cross-section of input from the community on where we've been and where we're going. We didn't just do that for fun. We did that so, one, that the consultants could learn all about our community, which was important as they helped shape who they would be bringing us to interview, and also the leadership qualities that we were looking for in the next superintendent, and that became the guiding document for this whole process as we interviewed candidates along the way. So that was step one. It was actually benefited greatly by Zoom. It was much easier to get broad cross-section of participation with the low barrier to entry that Zoom creates for a meeting. We also did written surveys as well, in which we got feedback that way as well. So we, we went as broadly as we could to get as much upfront feedback as possible. The board voted on the leadership qualities as a, and that became an important document as we went forward. So from there, the next part was sort of invisible to everyone, including me. The consultants went out and found candidates through advertising, through connections, through all, all various means. And I had no idea how many we would get in, in the strange times that we're living in. But we got 30 people approximately who fully completed the application process, which was a healthy number. The, the consultants do a first pass, so applying the leadership qualities that we've adopted to the 30 applicants, they do a first round interview, they review all of their paperwork, and they bring it down to approximately 10. And at that point, the community got back involved. So we create, we established and constituted a screening committee for the superintendent. I learned an interesting thing that that's not a, I just thought that was part of every superintendent process, and I learned from the consultants, it's actually not. It tends to be done in New England and nowhere else. And we had a little bit of discussion, should we do that or not? What are the pros or what are the cons? And ultimately, we decided to do it, and I'm very glad we did because it was, it was an excellent process. So we, we made our committee bigger than recommended by the consultants because we wanted to get as many people involved as we could, and not just names, but sort of trying our best to get as big a cross-section of our community as we could. And that, that took many forms. That took sort of seniors, you know, age in the community. We had older people, we had younger people. We had members of the faculty. We had members of the administration. We had people who we know historically have supported school budgets. We had people who we know historically have questioned school budgets. That was all very intentional because we wanted to have all those voices heard in, in the, in the screening committee. And I had no idea how that was going to go. And it was such a reaffirming night for me. The, the way that process unfolded was the consultants sort of had divided up the, the candidates based on who they had interviewed, and they gave a presentation about each candidate, highlighting the, you know, the high points of the paper file, but also what they had learned from their interviews. And we asked questions, we talked with one another. It went on for several hours. And at the conclusion of that, we did, we did a vote where we each privately voted, sent our votes into the Monica, one of, one of the consultants, and she tabulated them to just see where we were. And, and you know, if we were fully divided, we would continue to debate. But the entire group, as diverse as it was, unanimously agreed on the top five. And so we thought with that sort of unanimity, we were in good shape. And so we went forward with that top five. And then the next piece of advice, which was outstanding advice from the consultants, was move quickly. That a mistake districts can make is they get to this point, and they're like, all right, we're making progress. And then you slow down because it's the holiday season or other things come up. And now people are getting other jobs or they're, or they're, you know, changing their mind or whatever, and you start losing candidates. And so I felt like we had made it this far. Let's get this over the line so we could have our, our choice. And so we did that. So the committee met in the, in the middle-ish of December. And right after the holidays, the board went to the final prop aspect of the process, which was two Saturdays. So January 9th, the board interviewed the top five contenders. Each interview was approximately an hour and a half. And after that, we, we debated amongst ourselves how to narrow down that five. It was down to two. And on January 16th, we had the final round. In addition to another approximately hour to hour and a half of questions, we, by then, we had adopted a school budget, or at least a proposed school budget, and we had requested each of the finalists to examine our school budget in detail and then come, come and pretend that they were speaking in front of a community forum of people who were for the budget, opposed to the budget, and tried to advocate for the budget that, that the board had, had adopted. And that led to interesting discussions about afterwards, as we asked questions about, you know, what the candidates thought of our budget. It was a really helpful, helpful process to get into their thinking. And, and so that was sort of how we, how we did the final round. After that, we deliberated for a little bit because we unanimously agreed on who our finalist, who our final candidate should be, who our superintendent designation should be. And so the, that was all a big wind up to say, we are here now to, to announce who that is. And so it is my great pleasure to make a motion for the board to authorize Chairman O'Brien to sign the contract with Michael Flynn to be the next superintendent of the Hopkinton School District commencing July 1st, 2021.
Thank you, Seth. Is there a second?
A second.
Perfect. I, I, I just want to start, this won't be my official comment, but I, I just want to start and say thank you very much to Seth, who chaired the search process and into Rob, who also served on the search committee. And just say, you know, Seth, at that first meeting, we knew that you were our guy. And you did a fantastic job just, you know, leading this process, keeping us all informed and really moving, I think, you know, with speed, but also very deliberately and really thinking through the process and working so closely with the consultants. And so I just want to thank you because you know, you mentioned that we, we probably couldn't have done it without the consultants, and I think that's true. And I think this board, without your leadership on this, we probably wouldn't, we'd probably still be floundering somewhere. So thank you so much for taking on the task. It was really meaningful.
Thank you. Good process. I enjoyed it.
So, um, so we have a nomination on the floor, and then just invite any board member who wishes to, to speak to it.
Nobody wants to go? I'll go. I always go. Do you want to go? Who wants to go first?
We wanted you to go first, Norm.
I'll just break the ice because that's just how it always is. So when, um, I, yeah, I want to say thank you to Seth, and I want to thank you to Rob, and thank you to the community members for really helping us with, with this process. You know, when I, when I first met Mike, you know, the first thing that came to my mind, what my mind was is that, you know, he was a candidate for the Snickers commercial because he was hungry. He was hungry to make a difference to become a superintendent. And see, I broke the ice. And for me, as a, as a board member, you know, it's our job, you know, to hire a superintendent. And one of the things that was important to me as a board member was, you know, was three things. A superintendent that really could dig into our budget and process and really meet the needs of our students and our community and be able to deliver that. I thought the exercise of a superintendent looking at our budget cold turkey in less than like three days to present to us was a great exercise. He was able to pick on things that maybe, you know, that's unique from a different point of view, it's fresh pair of eyes. Another part of, for me, was on special education. You know, I think it's very important that we continue to look at that as a, as a community, as a budget and process to meet the needs of all students, while also trying to look at other ways in that specific area. And then I think the, the final thing for me as a board member was his communication always with this community and giving back its time, energy, and just being a people's person. And when, you know, I think I could share this, what was really exciting as a board when we, you know, told Mike about the job, he came on Zoom, and he didn't get back into his suit. He was just in his, his sweats, and it was a great feeling to be able to, to see him and to see the smile on his face that, you know, this board agreed to hire him because his energy was very, was just amazing, and he's just going to bring a new pair of eyes to this district. And I'm very happy that we came to agreement as a board and also just to all, all the effort of this community into this process. I'm very happy with this selection. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Any other comments?
Real quick. So it was very fun, as Seth said, to watch this happen from start to finish. Lots of opportunities for input from the community and the faculty and administration through focus groups and then the screening committee. And then, you know, just the interviewing of candidates by the board, really, you know, such a high-quality pool of people that we got to talk to about education over a course of a couple of Saturdays. And, you know, the thing with Mike that really struck me was the energy, the passion, the fact that he, he's, he's one of those people as in, you know, a good superintendent who's done it all. He's taught, he's been an administrator. He's been an assistant superintendent, and he is very pragmatic. And, and I think that people, as they come to know him, will really appreciate what he can do and will do for the town of Hopkinton. So I'm super excited.
Thanks, Rob.
I'll jump in. I think, you know, when, when we were first tasked with this, I felt that, you know, hiring a new superintendent was perhaps one of the biggest jobs and perhaps one of the most long-lasting decisions that our board will make. And we have some really wonderfully big shoes to fill in Steve. And I really wanted to make sure that not, we weren't just looking at the, the business aspect of, of the school district, but on the care and the social emotional and how that goes, you know, that goes far beyond our classrooms. It goes to our teachers and our staff, and it's something that Steve has brought and something that I really wanted to make sure our next superintendent continued and upheld. And I feel that we were able to find that in Mike. I, I am confident that he will be able to carry on this mission of care. You know, both for our students, teachers and staff, and for our community. And so that was something that really excited me about Mike.
So when, you know, Seth mentioned in his lead-up, the, you know, with the, with the help of the community, we had this leadership profile. And the consultants helped us put that together. And one of the, at least what I found very interesting and also very useful, that leadership profile and the interviews is that the consultant had them broken down by the, by the groups that helped us come up with these. So we had, you know, what are the top, most important things for the, for the board, for our leadership team, for our, our faculty and for the community, and many other categories. And so I went back to leadership profiles, we were, as we were conducting our interviews and, and really, you know, comparing the candidates to that profile. And so I'll just share a few of those leadership traits that sort of stood out to me anyway, as sort of the top one. So I think all groups said sort of finance, financial acumen was very important, you know, understanding fiscal knowledge and fiscal responsibility. You know, Mike did that and did that well, and Norman mentioned the, the, the presentation on the budget, and I think it sort of showed systems thinking, you know, as you hear from Mike, he's a systems thinker, and that was very important. The ability to build personal relationships, I think that stood out among, among many of the groups. And I think as you'll see and hear and talk to Mike, that's a, a big strength. You know, invested in curriculum and assessment, again, something we hear often from, from the community and from, from teachers, and, you know, Mike has a strong background there. And then, you know, the, the real need and desire for a superintendent who will advocate for all students, regardless of their career or college paths. Again, something that we've heard a lot of. And then, you know, really the cross-cutting theme, I think, from all the interviews was someone who was a really good communicator to all stakeholders. And so as I went through that list and, and, you know, Mike stood out on all those, I think, for me, not, not so much of checkboxes, but, you know, he really shined as we thought about what are those leadership profiles that we're looking for. And so I'm, I'm very excited to, to bring Mike on starting July 1. So any additional comments? Otherwise, I will call the roll. All right. So Seth.
Seth A-Frame, yes.
Rob.
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea.
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm.
Welcome aboard, Mike. Norm Gupel is a yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. And so the motion passes, and I would ask, I, I bet Mike Flynn is out there somewhere. If you could bring him on over, that'd be great. Welcome, Mike. Thanks for joining us and congratulations. We're, we're so pleased to have you with us and, you know, maybe give you a few minutes to introduce yourself to the community, but congratulations.
Thanks. I, I certainly appreciate it. Norm, I, I put my suit back on for tonight. So thanks for letting the community know about my, my other areas, but no, first and foremost, I thank the board for the thorough and extensive process that, that you put me through, as well as the other candidates. I know you mentioned it, Seth, but the, the exercises that we had to go through was a two-way street. So it wasn't just you getting to know me, but I got to know you in, in the community. And it became very apparent that this, this is where I wanted to be. And, and the closer I got to the finish line, the more I wanted it. So I appreciate that. It, it shows how thoughtful you were and what you were looking for, for the community. And I'm looking forward to, to getting acquainted with everybody and certainly being come a part of it. You know, it, in this world of Zoom, I wish we were somewhere else, obviously, in person and, and things of that nature, and, and that time will come. But you know, just briefly, you know, what, what can we expect? First of all, you don't replace someone like Steve. You don't replace anyone that's been in a district for that long with that type of leadership. So certainly, it's going to be my goal to follow him and continue to lead the work that he started. It's so important for, for the values and things that he's placed in this district, and, and it's my job to pick up that baton and continue running with it. So my keys, certainly coming into the district, is going to be listening and learning. That's the most important. Getting to know everyone and how things go and why we do them. But certainly, it's more about sharing my feelings and my beliefs and new lenses, and, and we can come to, to, to see things maybe the same or differently, but work together to build. Building relationships is going to be the most important, and I can't wait to get started with local leaders, the school board. I've now gotten to meet the, the district leadership, school leadership, and I can't wait to start meeting the staff and the students. We're in this game for a reason. It's, and the bottom line is the students and everything that we do is, is with them in mind. And, and I can't wait to work and to begin building a plan to, to move this, this district forward. I can't wait. You're going to hear it from me repeatedly. I know everyone's giggling now because I've said it 63 times, I think, over the past, past week or so, but I, I'm looking forward to it, and, and I can't wait to, to be a part of it in, in, in work with all stakeholders involved. So thank you, everybody. It's, it's, it's a pretty big deal, and I can't wait to get started.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, Mike. And just to talk a little bit about the transition, you know, so we, our, our plan is, you know, Mike has been introduced to and has met with the leadership team. He's met with the teaching leadership team. He's met with the association leaders in just the last week. So we've kept Mike busy. And, you know, moving forward, you know, start date's not to July 1st. But we've, we've talked to Steve, and we're beginning to, you know, acquaint Mike to the district, to acquaint Mike to some of the processes we have. And so over the course of the next several months, Mike will, you know, be, be learning as he's still continuing his, his day job up, up into July 1st. And then our hope and, you know, what we're working towards is, is a seamless transition. So Mike can slowly get himself up to speed. So starting July 1, he can, he can hop right in. And there'll still be a ton to learn, but not everything will be new to him at that point. So as we move closer, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll work with Mike to set up opportunities, I think, for, for some of that, I guess, meeting as much as we can over Zoom with members of the community and others. And so I would just ask everybody to be patient, because, you know, in the Zoom world, it's, it's hard. You just can't stop in the cafeteria and say hello. We'll have to work on that, but our hope is that over, over the course of the spring, we can find those opportunities for some more social occasions for, for, for meet and greet and relationship building.
Sounds great.
So I, I don't know, at this point, if anybody has anything else to add. I know we have more items on the agenda this evening, but I don't, I also don't want to lose the opportunity. So I'll just open it up for anybody else who has anything to say. If not, we can let Mike go. He doesn't, he, he's not with us. He doesn't have to spend the whole, the whole night with us tonight.
Mike, just thank you for accepting the job. You know, I thought the best part of the interview process was definitely you looking at our budget and giving it to us, but also the part that people need to remember, you were checking us out. You want to make sure that this was a boy that you want to be a part of, you know, going to our meetings, seeing if you could work with the five of us. And I just thought that was great, that in the interview process, it's a two-way street. And I just want to say thank you for choosing Hopkinton and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, guys. More than you know.
Wonderful. So what we will do for the community is we will put, actually, in, in meetings, Mike has called it Paper Mike. And so we're, we're going to put Paper Mike up on the website, which is, you know, Mike's resume, and some of those materials will be up on the website, so people can, can view that. And then we'll get the real Mike out and about in the community as soon as we can. So you have some Paper Mike and then Real Mike to, to meet over the next couple of months. Perfect. Well, thank you, Mike. We appreciate it. Congratulations again. We're, we're definitely excited to, to work with you.
Looking forward to seeing everyone soon.
Have a good night.
Have a great night.
Congratulations, Mike.
Thanks, Steve.
Can I just give two blurbs on Paper Mike, since I didn't do that part, just so the community knows where he came from? Because we
Thank you, Seth.
We forgot to do that part. So Mike lives in Wyndham. I'll start with the family thing. He's got three kids. And he is a 2004 graduate of, of, of Southern New Hampshire. He has a master's in business administration, a master's in business education. Right now, he has the coolest title, which I think is actually assistant superintendent, but the Hampstead School District calls that Director of 21st Century Learning Assessment and Technology. the Hampstead School District calls that Director of 21st Century Learning Assessment and Technology. Before that, he'd been the principal at Timberland Regional Middle School and the assistant principal at that school. It had been the academic dean of business at Timberland Regional High School. And prior to that, he taught computer technology in Milford, and he teaches on the side adjunct in the Graduate School of Education at Southern New Hampshire University. So those are the highlights.
Thank you. I think in all of our excitement, we forgot to to do the the paper mic. So thanks, Seth, for catching us up.
Yeah.
All right. And I also want to welcome Julia Shahadeh, who who joined us. Thanks for coming, Julia. Good to see you. All right. So back to the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight, Steve?
Sure. And I'd also just like to congratulate the board for finishing that process. It's a huge deal. And just congratulations on finishing it. And doing such a great job at it. Yep, we do have some additions and deletions tonight. We have an IA Structural Assistance added to the agenda. I'm Laney Hibbard. And we've got under the board's schedule, we've got to talk about a public hearing for SB2, because we did receive a validated petition for SB2. And we're going to talk about the schedule of a maintenance trust public hearing. We just want to put things in the pipeline for the next couple of weeks. So those are the additions and deletions.
Thanks, Steve. About any correspondence?
There is a few correspondence that I put in the meeting folder that I think the boards had access.
Perfect. And then we have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. And so I'd ask if there is a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on January 21, 2021.
No move.
Second.
Any discussion on those? All right, seeing none. Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Framing, yes.
Norm?
Norm Kupel, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. And so those minutes are approved. And I would ask for a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the minutes of the non-public session of the school board meeting held on January 21, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Perfect. Any discussion on those? All right, seeing none. Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Framing, yes.
Norm?
Norm Kupel, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. Those minutes are approved. So this brings us to our first public comment portion of the meeting. So there's two public comment portions of our board meetings, one now and then one towards the end of the meeting. And so if you're an attendee and you wish to provide public comments, I would just ask you to scroll down towards the bottom of your screen, and there's a raise your hand feature that will let us know that you have a comment. And I would just ask to try to keep your comment to around three minutes and just give us your name and address before you go. And so with that, I have a couple of hands up. And so I'll call them in order as they come up. And I will start with Candy Garvin. Good evening, Candy.
Good evening. First of all, congratulations to all of us. Mike can't just fill shoes. He has to bring his own. He has to bring his gloves, both the sparring and the dress up, a hat, occasional. There there are no shoes that he can fill. That being said, congratulations to all of you. If anybody needs a recommendation, let me know. I'll write you a letter. Thanks, and au revoir.
Thank you, Candy. Appreciate it. Maybe I'll I'm going to call you up for a letter of recommendation. Give it one more minute if anybody has comment to make. And again, if not, we have opportunity at the end of the meeting. All right. So seeing no other hands, I'm going to close the comments from the public and and ask any comments from the school board.
I have a quick comment, Jim. So I had the opportunity to work with the Nordic team the last couple of weeks and had the opportunity to go and help out and meet yesterday. And just, you know, when you leave a program after that long, you think about who comes in. And Rob Roth is an amazing coach and does an incredible job with his team. Just really, really excited to see what he's been able to do and continues to do. Just a super guy and a good coach and good for kids. This was really fun couple of weeks.
Nice. Well, thanks for doing that, too, and volunteering. I know it's it's helpful and very important. So thanks.
Um, I just quickly, I know last week I had a longer gratitude speech. This week it's going to be much shorter. I just wanted to highlight some gratitude that the PTA is throwing towards our teachers and staff. I appreciate their appreciation. They are working with the Huffington Country Store. I think that's not the Cracker Barrel, the new name. Anyhow, and offering all teachers and staff a free beverage and donut through February 14th as a way, another way to spread the love. And so I just want to thank the PTA for doing that and also thank our teachers and staff and the community for getting involved in the little spread the love that's happening throughout the town right now.
I attended the Virtual National Honor Society induction the other night, and I am impressed with our ability to figure out how to do these things remotely in the time and effort that goes in to how to figure out how to do them and how to make them meaningful for the students. And I also want to say that I was blown away. So part of the ceremony is the the leadership of the organization. Students talk about the four pillars of the of the society, which is leadership, character, service, and scholarship. And each one took of those topics. And the thoughtfulness, it's hard to describe. The thoughtfulness that that we should that that I heard from the students. And it just shows, you know, what we're producing in this town, what the teachers are, what, you know, what we're getting these young people to do to not only be able to write, you know, beautiful sentences, but have deep thoughts about deep topics and and make connections that I found to be very meaningful. So it's very impressive.
All right, I guess I'll take it from there. Real quick, you know, in our last meeting, I had a little bit to reflect on what was discussed in that meeting. And a little bit was discussing, you know, our younger students and students who are falling behind and how, you know, what is our plan to address that? And it weighed on me a little bit. Because I it's something I that's is very dear to me and something that, you know, was important for me to discuss tonight with the board real quickly. I trust our school district and I and I trust that we're going to be able to develop a plan for our students that maybe aren't getting the numeracy and literacy at this younger age in order to help them. You know, I'm 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 in my 40s, and it was not until fifth grade that I had a problem with literacy and speech. It's something that I continue to struggle. And I understand that maybe if it was caught earlier, I wouldn't have had the difficulties that I have today as a as an adult. And the reason I share that is because sometimes we look at this board and think that sometimes we don't get what what you're what you're saying, what we do, because some of us have experienced it in in their own education, how important it is that we catch this at a younger age and make a plan for it. And a part of me wishes I addressed this with the community when I was maybe first on the board, but it took time for me to share that with you because struggling to read is something that's been very hard in my life and with speech. And I've overcome it, over overcame it, see, right there. I overcame it, but it's important that we when we get back to normal, when normal is classified, that we're able to catch those students at the at the appropriate age, so they're not able to struggle. And so to all those parents out there that worry, I'm there with you. I'm here on the board. I want to be able to make a difference and really help with that plan. So sorry to bring the mood down on the board for a couple of seconds, but I just thought it was important for me to share that with with this board that we all bring something to this board. And I bring, you know, Norm, and then I bring what's happened to me when I was a child. So that's just one of the things I wanted to share with you guys. Thank you.
Norm, thank you so much. It's meaningful. Thank you. Mia or Juliet, do you have anything you want to share this evening? All right. Well, thanks. And I'll just so something weird happened to me today in that I looked up from my desk and there there are no kids in my house, which hasn't happened in a very long time. And they're all at school, which is is a transition, I know, to a later part of the board meeting. But I I again, just want to thank everybody, our teaching, our teachers, administration, staff. This board, you know, for for really making the strong effort to, you know, return students to the classroom. You know, and we've we've talked for the past year at every meeting about, you know, our desire, where we want to go, you know, trying to to navigate everything that's in front of us. And, you know, this week was you know, another attempt that, you know, bringing students back to the classroom. So I just want to extend my thanks to to all the teachers and staff who are making this possible and for giving me, you know, a day of of quiet, uninterrupted work that that wasn't involving involving fourth grade math. I do really appreciate it. So with that, I want to move on to our next agenda topic, which is going to be the FY22 budget. And I believe I'm going to turn it over to Norm to start with the debrief on the Budget Committee meeting and where we're at. So Norm.
Sure, sure. I just want to say thank you to the board for their support. Going into the Budget Committee, but I really want to say thank you to Steve and Michelle. They they prepped me well. They answered every question throughout the meetings, and it was just a great experience. And I want to thank them both very much for their help. I'm pleased to say that the Budget Committee preliminary have agreed to all our warrants 10-0. And I think that's really great. There's a lot of a lot of great questions, a lot of deliberation, and I'm happy to tell you guys that we're going into the public hearing next week with so with full support and all our articles, all our warrants. There was one important discussion that we we talked about, and that was the percentage on the notation. Is that the right word I'm using?
Evaluation.
Yeah, the valuation. And there was discussion on the Budget Committee on we all agree unanimously that we should be using the same number. And we discussed that, and we all agreed on it. But when it came to what number, that was a different discussion. So it went back and forth a little bit. The final number that they recommended, that's the key word in their motion, not required, recommended, was a 541 with Mr. Tron, I'm staying from, was a half a percent on the valuation. So as you know, we budgeted for what the DRA is, which is flat zero, no changes, no nothing. And the Budget Committee made a motion 541. Of course, I said no with a half half a percent increase. So the impact is basically changing our numbers in our presentation. But I think Steve and Michelle could probably go a little bit in depth, you know, what the ramifications are if we are to change that. But as of right now, watching the select board meeting the other night, they did change theirs to a half a percent. Originally, it was 1%. So they did follow the recommendation of the Budget Committee while we're still at the 0%. Was that good, Steve?
You're doing great. So where this manifests itself is is we're preparing documents right now for the public hearing, including slides, as well as one of the documents that is in in the to annual town report is the warrant summary. And in the summary, we put the estimated tax impact of each article. Right now, and I think I included it in the pack. It was a draft of of some just articulating below the general fund article two that there is that we could state this is the Budget Committee estimate tax impact, and this is the board estimate of the tax impact. And so that and then how we present or how, excuse me, how Norm presents on Wednesday. And that's really the piece that doesn't change how much rate is it? And the tax rate is going to be the tax rate, you know, in September, when when Michelle works with DRA. We're a little bit different than the town in that we also have a statewide educational property tax rate for for a piece of it. So one of the things that is is just how we track it. One of the things we like, for example, when we approved, when the facility project was approved in 2019, the valuation then was 670 million, and that was $1.15 on the tax rate. Well, for a while, I kept $1.15, but on the new evaluations down to about 85 cents. So that's what you know what I mean? So we have to adjust. And how do you just keep tracking the impact of the tax rate over time? If you have an interim increase right now, because this increase that we talked about today will very could very well be different than the one that's set in September. So you have the actual, you know, the reported, the interim, and then the final. And it's just so it's absolutely the board's pleasure. I understand why some towns do it, and we have multiple tax rates. But we have always reported and consistently reported the DRA line on the tax form. But we just need some direction so we can prepare the documents for the annual town report for preparation for the public hearing and for Norm's presentation. Does that make sense? Is that?
Yeah, it does. So, you know, so what we have is, I think, a Budget Committee recommendation, as Norm said, that, you know, they feel comfortable as a Budget Committee recommending anyway, that we we do what the town has done, which is the the half a percent increase on the valuation. So I guess that's what's open for discussion. And I don't know if anybody has any thoughts. And I saw, Rob, you took yourself off. Did I say that wrong?
You do great. It's just a 10 cent impact. I'm sorry. I was supposed to
Oh, it's a 10 cent impact. Thank you. Okay.
I didn't say that. I apologize. It's on my list.
I I guess I'm very curious your thoughts, Jim, because you've got the most experience as a select person for a lot of years. So I'm kind of curious where you're at with this. I mean, I said last meeting that it seems to me like most school districts follow the the rule that that Steve and Michelle have done. So that makes sense to me. But I'm I'm curious to hear what you where you're at.
Yeah. Well, thanks. So I would say, you know, leading up to this, and I think I spoke at one of the meetings, just saying that I I guess I was it was hard to see, they hard to support it, mostly because we have a firm number that we know, and this would be one that we don't. And so I had a conversation with Neil Cass, the town administrator, just to better understand, because, you know, he is, I would say, he's one of the real experts that I know. And then I know that Mark Zankel, who's the Budget Committee Chairman, also had a conversation with Neil and passed along some thoughts. And so I bet I I think I better understand the the rationalization for it. I think, you know, in in one of the notes I saw, Neil Neil explained, you know, where that, you know, what what's being built in the town, the building permits that are coming forward. In his view, that's it's it's, you know, with I wouldn't, I mean, without doubt, it's not a reckless move on the part that it's supportable. And that other districts and other towns do do some of these estimated valuations as they conduct their budget. So it's not, we wouldn't be, you know, the first and only town to do it. So those things helped me, I guess, wrap my head around why to do it. I I still have a little bit of caution that, you know, we set a different valuation and other that that doesn't happen. And then, you know, our tax rate then looks worse moving forward if if the valuation goes down. But I I think from the Budget Committee's perspective, and I think from, you know, I don't want to put words in Neil's mouth, but I think from Neil's perspective, that's a very unlikely thing to happen with with the rate of, you know, building permits and growth here in the town that it's unlikely that we're going to face that. So that that was a very long answer, other than say, I I think I'm more comfortable than I than I think I was when this was first brought up. But if that if we were to go there, I I don't think it's reckless, and it's 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 not, it deceives last comment. I mean, it's 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 a 10 cent impact. And so it's it's not like we're we're trying to change evaluation by, you know, 20%. It's it's not a huge impact. And so I do think it's important that both the school and the town are using the same valuation. And because I just think that creates less confusion if we're doing so. So I know that that was a very long answer, Rob. I don't know if that helped or not, but I think I'm more comfortable.
Yeah, that that helped a lot and gave me a little insight as to where the town came from and where the number came from. So thank you.
I I guess just speaking for myself, you know, because it is such a small tax impact, I would rather use a number that we know and budget more, just be a little more conservative and then be pleasantly surprised if the valuation does come back that results in a lower tax rate than we had projected, rather than sort of you know. I, I guess I sort of understand where the half a percent came from. It still feels a little arbitrary to me, and it doesn't feel like it has a huge impact on our overall tax rate. I do understand, you know, the need for us, or why it would be good for us to all share a tax rate. It's a little tricky coming in, being the last ones to weigh in on this. You know, I sort of wish that we had been able to do this together as two boards working together on it instead of separately, because I do feel like it also puts us in a tricky position. Because if we were to say no, then we'll end up with two different numbers, even though the tax impact really isn't very different. And if we say yes, it just, it, it doesn't necessarily feel like a decision that came from the school board, but rather a decision that, that was put upon us. And, and one that we, we decided to go, I mean, we did make a decision, we went with the known number. So I guess I am, I am still much more hesitant to use a different number and a different valuation. I would prefer not just for, you know, the, for today, for the tax rate, but I think as Steve mentioned, for tracking into the future, if we start using different numbers, I just feel like it can get unnecessarily confusing. And budgets are tricky enough. So that's, that's sort of where I'm at right now.
Norm, you said the vote on this was five to four with one abstention?
Yeah, it was, you know, and I brought up Andrea's point that what, you know, we came up with a motion saying that asking each, each, each person to have like the same number, but then if I didn't support the 0.5 increase, and they didn't support the 0% increase, and the select board went down from one to 0.5, but it was five, it was 541. But there was no hard feelings if we decided to stay at 0%. You know, my, my feeling is, you know, before I was on the board and I was sitting in the bleachers, one thing I used to do is get out my phone, and I used to take the tax rate on the screen, and I would time to buy what my house value was. And I was like, okay, that's why I got paid for tax increases, because that's, that's what the school district's saying to me. Now, for taking a little bit of a fluctuation of like, I don't want to say a guess, because I respect the methodology that the select board used. It's, it's, it's a unique time right now. And for us to kind of deviate from the norm and, and not have this discussion in the beginning of the budget process, I think is a little too risky. I think as a board, this is something we should be discussing before we go through this whole process, and then establish that moving forward. I understand it's important we both use the same number, and I, and I, it was discussed in the budget committee that we, we should be talking about this in the beginning of the budget process. That wasn't, that was mentioned and not during this phase. But you know, I'm a controller, and I like to have something reflect something that's set in stone. And if it goes down later, that's great. But I want to be able to promise to the community what it is at this fixed moment. That's, that's how I felt. Does that?
Robert and Seth, where are you guys on this? Because Seth, do you want to jump in?
So I mean, I guess I'm more interested in Jim talking about, you know, there's some value in both arms of the town operating off of the same playbook. But I guess I don't understand it all enough to know how important is that really? Because I certainly understand what Andrea and Norm are saying. What, how important is that? Because that seems to be what would be driving to do it.
The importance of having two different valuations.
Trying to get on the same page as the select board.
Yeah, I would just say, I think, just probably confusion among the voters, that there would be, you know, tax rates based, set based upon two different numbers. And just, you know, having to, I think, explain.
And I guess I don't know this issue well enough. Is, is it, has the select board changed recently, or has this two numbers always been there?
So in my time on the board, this hasn't, it's been talked about from time to time when I was there, but it was never acted upon. But again, this is, this isn't. I, I think for municipal governance, this isn't a new thing. I don't know if that helps, but, and I know, you know, from the board, from the select board, you know, would just know that this is, they, they talked about this through their budget process, that this wasn't just out of the blue one day they decided. So from their deliberations, this has been something that they've been, you know, talking about and discussing and, and thinking about. And so, so from their budget process, this wasn't new. For ours, it came in late, for sure.
It does strike me as strange that we would, at this point, sort of change our numbers and how we're thinking about our numbers, even though I understand it's not going to make a huge difference, you know, if we went into it next year thinking this is a choice to make from the outset. That seems more regular order to me.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I think Norm makes a good point that if you're going to make this change, it's better to make it at the start of the budget process, not when the budget process is done, and then somehow, well, this looks a little smoky as to whatever. I know it's not the case, but I, I think that the conservative path here is probably best.
And I think the select, so I think the select board did do that, you know, in the beginning, which I think, you know, I do my best to go to their meetings. I can't be everywhere, but they, they, they had the beginning of their budget process. And, you know, I think it's something for us in our next budget, we can have that discussion and maybe have more feedback from others in order in determine what's best.
And, and you know, we do meet before the budget process starts traditionally with, with the select board. And this could be, this could just be something we add to the, the topic, because it would be good for us to learn, you know, what, what the board's seeing in terms of building projects and changes to the valuation, and that could help at the beginning of the process. So that might just be something we put onto the meeting agenda just to discuss. And if they, if the select board is seeing growth, that'd be a good thing for us to know, and then we can stay in touch. And so it sounds like, at least if I'm reading the room, it, it sounds like the consensus at this point is just to stay with, you know, the valuation that we began our process with, and we'll continue forward with that number. And, and if there are questions do come up, you know, during the process, I think we can, at this point, adequately explain, you know, why we're sticking with where we are. And Norm, from your description, it doesn't sound like this will rub the budget committee the wrong way, that theirs is just a recommendation, but.
Yeah, it's just a, it's just a recommendation. I mean, I don't know, they'll be fine.
And can I ask a question? And maybe you're going to address this anyhow. Um, in the, we got like a preview of, of the warrant article, and it, it states both of the, the tax impacts. Is that going to stand in the, in the warrants? I'm probably skipping ahead. I know I am actually. But will that stand so that folks can see, you know, this is the number that we recommend, but this is the number based on what the budget committee recommends? You know, the 118 versus 128.
And that was, our recommendation was to report both, report the budget committee. But if you don't want it, we don't have to. But Michelle that the, the budget committee estimate of article two is this, the school board's estimate of article two is this. And that's really the only difference. And when you get, I mean, we hope that this doesn't occur at 10 cents. And we hope this isn't come a big issue, because there's a lot more substantive issues connected to this budget. But that's what we had thought, that we would have the warrant summary and the presentation next Wednesday, just include both numbers. But I said, we don't want to offend or irritate anybody, but that's what we thought we would do. If the board keeps that number, I thought we'd share their number, too.
Yeah, I, I mean, I like having both. You know, my one concern would have been that if we're using two different valuations, that one number either looks either a little too high or a little too low. And, and this way, by having both, you're getting the full picture. So I like that, having both.
And we may also learn, I mean, if we have both of them going to the public hearing, and we hear from the members of the public that, you know, they, they understand the valuation the town has gone with, and that, that could help us maybe in the future or even with this budget. So I think having both is a good way to get the public's attention, and maybe they can give us some feedback on it.
I, I think we've got the marching orders. I think we're in good shape.
Great. All right. Thanks. Also, the next item, just continuing on budget, is prep for the annual meeting. And so Steve, do you want to, you want to take us from there?
Sure. Real quickly, I'll turn it over to Andrea. So we're in the process now creating the documents that will be posted. And last year, if you remember, we posted, I think, March 13th, and then it was postponed a few times. And so now we're trying to get all our documentation ready. So when we post it, we'll have not just the March 20 date, but the, the two connected dates. So if we can decide on that, and it'll be all posted, the newspaper and all the clean dates that we have to do. I think we'll start there, and then we'll just talk a little bit about the annual report, the public hearing next week. Andrew, do you want to talk about your, just your thoughts on the schedule of March, week of backwards March 1?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that. And do you mind if I, I can actually share my screen quick?
I can make it for you. Sorry.
Okay, sorry, I didn't even try. So sometimes I just feel like being able to see something visually is.
You, now you should be able to share.
All right. A lot of fun. All right. Okay, so you guys see this? Is it big enough, or would you like me to make it bigger?
Great.
Okay, so, um, all of this is going to be based on House Bill 1129. That's what passed last year, and it covers both 2020 and 2021. And, and there, there no big changes to it this year. It was pretty much, there was a little bit of changes as far as dealing with absentee ballots, but that's not something that we're going to be having to deal with here. And so basically, sort of working backwards, March 20th is when we're going to be having the drive-through voting. And I believe our moderator has stated that it, as of right now, is going to be at the Hopkinton Middle High School, starting at nine, although I don't know if that's been formed up. And that's up to Mr. Newsom, our moderator, not us. So that's, that's at his, his discretion. So working way back, so no later than March 5th, we'll be posting notice for all of these virtual meetings on the Hopkinton District School website. Needs to either be on the front page or a big link on the front page, and it will stay up until Mr. Newsom says that the meeting is closed. And so if the meeting continues to stay open, that notice will stay up on our website, and will be also posted in two other spots in town. And the other thing that we're going to need to do no later than March 5th, I would estimate, we'll probably do this on March 4th or 5th, would be mailing a notice out to all registered voters. So this, people are going to get duplicates. If you have two voters in your household, you will get two of these, because it goes to every registered voter. Basically, this is just the procedures and, and what they can expect. It'll be our Zoom links. It will be the timeline. If we want, we can include other information regarding the warrants, but we are not obligated to do so. And we are going to see about having this done, not in-house, because that takes many, many hours and is really hard on the printer. So we will be doing that on Monday. This is, and this is what I would anticipate, and these are also open to input from other board members. So Monday, March 15th, I put in 6:00 PM, we can do 5:30. I was just trying to find a time that's after work, but I don't, we're all in our homes mostly. Many of us aren't, actually not all of us. And so this will be the first informational session we'll go over. Again, the information on how the process works, and then we will also be introducing and explaining our warrants and opening up for the first public comment. Similar to last year, we're going to then have a period of three days, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday until 5:00 PM, where people can send in public comments, questions, suggested article amendments, and those can be sent in by email or by voicemail. And last year, we set up a dedicated phone line and email, and so we'll do that again, so people can send in all of their thoughts. And then for Friday, if we wanted to, we could do two more meetings, but that is a lot of meetings. So I would probably recommend doing one, I would recommend most likely during Friday, just because we're going to be getting potentially comments and article amendments up until 5:00 PM. And so I think it's tricky to try to turn around within an hour and, and hold a meeting that Thursday night. So I, I would suggest Friday, we have our second virtual meeting. At that meeting, our moderator will present us a summary of the comments, the questions and articles. It does, we will make all of those things, anything that's sent in will be made public. And we did this last year as well, all be written down, so people can read through them. But our moderator will give us a summary of those, because we have a town that cares very loudly, which is wonderful. But if we were to read all of the comments, it, it could make the meeting lengthier than it already probably will be. And so the difference this year, because we are going to be doing HB 1129, and last year, when we went through this process the first time, and I think the second time, um, we, we were just sort of doing it on our own. And so we had, as you'll recall, I think, six different budget amendments on one ballot. And we learned through experience that that is really confusing and overwhelming for everyone. So the thing that House Bill 1129 does is it, it basically states that the governing board, which in this case is the school board, will be the ones who will make the final determination as to what the amended, if we want to, what the amended final warrant will be. And so that Friday, we will go ahead and figure, talk through everything, figure out what, if any amendments we would like to make, and create that final warrant. Yeah, as I'm saying this and thinking out loud, that the tricky part is that that final warrant then needs to be made public for people to be able to print out and bring with them to the drive-through voting, which would be the next day at 9:00 AM. So that's a pretty fast turnaround time. But I also think that if stuff is pretty much set up and just needs changes in numbers, it will be, it'll be okay. I think that's everything. So we've got a couple of different dates on there. They all are related to the House bill. And they cover 2020 and 2021. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to do my best to answer them. I can stop sharing.
Andrew, is the gap between Monday's meeting and Thursday at 5:00, is that part of the bill, that you need to have those three days?
Yeah, that's a requirement. So there's a requirement that the board allow time for the public to weigh in, both through voicemail and electronically. They even have, like, they can text us stuff, but I would prefer not to receive texts. I think the official means will be email and voicemail.
I guess I'm a little concerned about the turnaround to, you know, because we can't do it on Thursday night, we do it on Friday, what, in however long that might take. And then turning around and having a ballot that, you know, people are showing up with the proper ballot. That just seems really tight. And I don't, I, if, is there another way to slay that dragon to keep those days in there? I mean, could we go? Could we start the previous week and say, maybe we have our first meeting on a Thursday? And have the second one, you know, is it three contiguous days, or is it three business days? I just would like to see a little more time between the final warrant and the actual drive-through voting.
Sure, I think it's, it's seven days prior to, I believe, prior to the, I'm actually pulling up. Prior to the actual voting, and I just actually received, and I had been looking for this. I had thought that the state had made some changes to whether or not people would be able to print out a ballot ahead of time. I had not found any change, but I just received a message that somewhere where I did not find it, that that is true. And so people will have to receive. So I take that last part of what I said back, they're not going to be able to print out their ballots. They will need to get it onsite.
But I think, I, I, what I took you said, some people will fill out the ballot at home, bring it so they can just copy it on the, on the one. But right, we have to have an official ballot handed to each voter at the site. But I think you're right, Andrew. I think many people will, you know, make sure they have everything filled out so they can just copy it. But yes, we'll, we'll have a colored piece of paper or something that day with James's direction and the supervisor, the checklist, to make sure we have an official ballot available that day.
Yeah, but if we wanted to, we can, we can go earlier, Rob. I mean, I think that would be.
I mean, I'm thinking we typically have our meetings on a Saturday. So if we had the, the first meeting on Saturday in a normal fashion, and then you've got your follow-up time, and that, that would close by Tuesday or Wednesday. And then that gives us two days to make sure we've got it right and posted and ballots printed and all the rest of it. And it might also, you know, if it's, if it's, I know daytime Saturday, but daytime Saturday, but nighttime doesn't necessarily work super well for a lot of folks either, and we went pretty late last year. So if we were to treat it like a regular meeting and start at nine, that, that gives us a lot more wiggle room on the other end.
So that would be session one would be nine o'clock on a Saturday, and then three days after you have session two. And then, and then you have a little bit of gap to make sure you print it, make sure we have 3,000, 2,000 copies. You know how many people we had, and make sure we're all ready.
Yeah, I think we could definitely do that. I think the only kind of feedback that we heard last year was from folks saying that Saturdays were really hard for their families. Um, and that evening times were better. But again, it was when we heard that last year, it was in the very beginning of COVID, and things looked a little different. I don't know. I, I, I agree. I don't think that there's going to be a day that we can choose that works for everyone. And I definitely think that if we want to move it back essentially two days, move everything back two days. That gives us some good wiggle room. We'll just need to also shift back. When we are, yeah, the mailing and when we're announcing. And right now, we have our a board meeting on March 4th that was going to be in preparation for this. And so we would just need to make sure that that preparation is done prior to our preparation board meeting. Um, because we'll need to, if if we're sending, if we're doing the meeting on March 13th, then we need everything sent out and posted no later than March 3rd.
So that means our February 18th meeting becomes the March 4th meeting. And then every, that next day, we'll have to sign the warrant and be right and get everything all set. So we can do that. And we can just make sure that's all ready. We just want to make sure we have all these dates on the warrant itself.
Yeah, unless we wanted to do any kind of special meeting.
Yeah, that's true.
Happy 40th, by the way. This is our 40th official public meeting.
Norm or Seth, any, any thoughts on, on the dates and what's been, what Rob has proposed anyway, in terms of a, starting on the Saturday?
I mean, Rob's clearly right that we don't want to have it a crash at the end. So seems, seems better to back it up.
Yeah, I mean, as long as, you know, whatever date you're going to choose, someone's going to have a problem with. And as we know, in this beautiful community, we're not going to make everyone happy. But I think, I think Saturday would make sense, and it gives us enough time to communicate everything appropriately. So I'm fine with Saturday if it works with everyone else.
There's also three days to comment, so.
And then another meeting to come back and speak again, so.
Right, so we'll have a meeting on Saturday, the 13th, we'll have public comment, or people sending in public comment, the 14th, 15th, and 16th. Then do we want a meeting on Wednesday, the 17th, or Thursday, the 18th?
I think we go Wednesday to make sure we have time. I, I have this nightmare that every copier in New Hampshire is going to be broken on that day, and we're not going to be able to produce 4,000 copies. So earlier the better. Michelle and I can drive somewhere and get them all copied if we have to.
All right, I can send this to you, Steve, and to the board.
Yep, and I'll work this out. Thank you. I appreciate Andrew, all your work on that. Thanks, everybody.
Definitely. Thank you. Um, I think you're still up, Steve. Is there anything else under, under annual meeting?
So we just want to make sure. So what Michelle and I are proposing for the annual report is to remove, Rob, if you remember, all the, the, all the operating function areas of the, of the giant bulletin. Those weren't walked through, but we'll do the increases, decreases, we'll do the one pager, right, that Rob, that you produced. And the, the trust and the, you know, all that information is already there. But we're going to remove some of the pages that we usually have in the annual report and replace it with like the one pager and make it more concise. Does that make sense? And, and we'll have those documents ready also for the public hearing. Norman and I will meet on Monday to finish the slides. But we'll have a folder all ready, and we'll talk to Mark if we put it on the town website, in our website, to make sure. Because typically, when you walk into the public hearing last year, you grab 10 dot, you know, a packet of 10 documents with a cover letter. So it's a little bit different, but um, we just want to make sure that we provide the right information. And, and um, I know the, and Rob, you spent a lot of time on this, the, the big spreadsheet. When it goes to the, to the one-page side of the annual report, it gets tiny. Um, I actually do have a magnifying glass. Sometimes I pull out and use it, because it really is, uh, it's nice to store. It's an easy place for me to find it. Um, so I would still recommend we put it there and maybe reduce another year off or something, Rob, for that one. So it's a little bit bigger, but it's nice having a, the town report, sometimes I just grab it because I know the revenue sheet's there and that big spreadsheet's there, and your one pager will be there and the increases, decreases. So um, but it's not necessarily, it's not mandatory.
Yeah, you remember, Steve, when we, um, I don't know, I, I didn't actually do it. One of my cohorts upstairs did it, but took that big spreadsheet and put it onto a different, into a different software and was able to make it. It did push it into two pages, but it did make it readable.
If you want to send us that, we'll happily add that in, and maybe, maybe it's a two-page, right, in the front and back or something with the headings. I just like that document for historical record, and I'll use it in my assumption is that, Mike, you know, it's going to be nice to have one document with all the, that stuff available.
Um, yeah, so tomorrow we can get together and I'll make sure I've got the right one and, and do a little reformatting, and it would push it to two pages, but it does make it readable for folks without a micro.
Excellent. Thank you. We've got our direction and, and public hearing next Wednesday. Six o'clock, right, Michelle? I think it's at six. Yeah.
So Steve, on the public hearing, just, just, so we're all aware, um, the, this board has no real role during that, they're in that process, right? So Norm will present, and I think and discuss, but the rest of us can attend, but we're not going to be, we're not going to be panelists, we'll be attendees.
Right, and, and typically, Michelle and I try to answer any questions, and if we're but right, Norm presents, and then occasionally, Michelle and I only answer usually two or three questions. We're happy to help in any way.
Perfect, thank you.
And then we've got three budget information session scheduled. I apologize, PTA is at 5:30. I don't want to false advertise, but it's all scheduled for 5:30 on March 3rd. Norm, right, we're, we're all set to do that. And we'll, I know they're excited about that, to have us. And then I haven't talked to Donna Dunlop, but last year, we did do a sweets with Steve in person. We'll try and talk to Donna about having that, Norm. Um, if, if you want, and if you want to make sweets with Norm, and you want me second chair, I'm happy to do anything. But uh, last year, I did it first chair, I think. And then we do have, uh, Norm, all of Hopkins Rotary all set for March 10. And typically, and this is somebody you can think about, during these couple of weeks, the school board and leadership team has done senior lunch. Right, that was our, our past traditions. Um, this year, I know Rotary did a to-go lunch. Um, and if you wanted to do a to-go lunch, we can certainly talk to Neil, and um, we did, last couple of years, we did ham. I did the ham, and we did potatoes and beans, and we could do, we could, if you wanted to, we could try and do a to-go lunch um, during one of the, either the week of the 10th or the week of the 17th, because we have a couple of weeks. So just let me know if, but in-person lunch, but I know to-go lunches are happening.
And Andrea, if you're around, welcome to join for the PTA. Would love to, two of us to show up, you know, let me know and.
I'll be there.
All right, let's do it. All right, there we go. All right.
So that's, me too, everybody okay?
Thanks, Eve. Yeah. So kindergarten?
Sure, so I was, Bill and I were chatting this year, this time last year, we were worried about 86 kindergartens. Remember that? We were updating you just in case we're going to get that fifth. This year, just, I think kindergarten is such a, a variable that it's, um, it's good to just report on it regularly to see where we are. Um, as of February 4th, we've had 38 youngsters register. Um, this time last year, we were at 31. Um, so we're on a higher pace than last year, and we'll keep, to be honest, this morning it was 18, but then they added all the preschool ones that we already knew. So early, I was like, wow, 18 is pretty low. But quickly, when we added all the ones, it came up to 38. So we are on pace to where we, you know, expect to be. I don't think we're going to get to 86, but I don't think we're going to get to the 18 that we thought. But we'll update you regularly because that does impact the budget. And there's four, just, we know there's four in the budget.
Any questions on that for Steve? All right, so next agenda topic is, I don't know why I chuckle on this one, but I'm getting Steve to laugh at it too. So operating and learning in a global pandemic.
So I'm going to bump them up.
Oh, perfect. Thank you, Steve.
That's okay with you?
No, I think it's great.
And, uh, well, see, everybody's bumping around. There's Chris, I hope. And let's see. Oh, they raised hands. Love the raised hand. And so hopefully, I, I, I beamed all of them. Do we get them all? Did I lose any?
I see Amy, Chris, Bill, and Rebecca. I think you did it.
Nice.
All right. Well, welcome, everyone. Thanks for joining us this evening.
So I'm just going to provide just a quick update every week. Either it's, it's, depending on my schedule, it's either Friday, Saturday, or Monday, email to the community. Um, but right now, at Harold Martin School, we have six students in quarantine, four because of exposure at school, two because of travel, and we have three staff in quarantine because of exposure, one staff with a test, with a positive confirmed case. So that's Harold Martin. Um, it's Maple Street. We have two students who are in quarantine, waiting for the results due to symptoms. And at the middle high school, we have four students in quarantine, waiting for results due to symptoms. So that's just the, the case count as of 2:00 or 3:00 today. That's where we are. Any questions about that? We're going to do the matrix, but because we're now trying, if we can, right, control our contact tracing, we are keeping school going. If we, if this was a strict interpretation, then we would have closed. And but everybody's comfortable, nurses and I talk all the time. So you can see a change in our procedure today. I mean, just the other day, that we've evolved since we started this. Everybody okay? So just a, a little bit, I'm just going to do a little introduction to the learning model and intervention where we are, and then I'll turn it over to Bill, Amy, Rebecca, and Chris. Um, so, um, Chris and Rebecca and I met for about an hour today, leadership team met, and we talked about our continual improvement model, or Jim, I think you call it adaptive leadership from adaptive management, as we continue to evolve our our system. And Chris and Rebecca will talk about where we are in synchronous learning, where we are in the model. But please know, we are having extensive discussions about trying to get as much in-person, as much synchronous, and as much real-time content and short learning as we can. And Chris, Rebecca, and Amy, and Bill will talk more in depth. I do want, before I turn it over to them, um, I'm really, really pleased and, and really excited to talk about just how sometimes things can happen really fast and really well in the Hopkins School District. So a lot, two weeks ago, a lot of community input, a lot of some board thoughts and this leadership team about, concerned about the learning loss, K1, 2, or elementary, and where we are. Um, a very valuable conversation. I appreciate, uh, you know, trying to understand where we are with student achievements, and then how do we remedy? During that conversation, um, Michelle, of course, listened intently, and Michelle has a real global understanding of where we are in grants, and where we are in, in our funding. And immediately, she felt, could we rewrite one of our title grants to provide those services? And I think the next day, you know, she's calling me, Steve, we got to do this. And she was like, let's do it now. And she'd already contacted Joey. And so she's really enthusiastic about really providing additional resources to meet the need of trying to understand where we are in student achievement with learning loss and how to improve it. So we were able to rewrite a, a, a title grant that is starting, March 1st, will have about 300 hours of intervention, 150 at Harold Martin School and 150 at Maple Street School, where, and Bill and I go way back, it's called the Green Book, this targeted accelerated growth loop. It's a really powerful approach. So we will do some, we're going to do a lot of assessments to understand where, so we have additional staff who will assess students, understand the gap in standards, design a high-quality, effective instruction, and then you reassess. And so we will be having about 300 hours of additional time to diagnose, plan, reteach, and then reassess all through the title grant, which is pretty innovative. It's, it's using a, the, the, the component was class size reduction, because we are reducing our intervention groups by having all these hours. And then it's also, um, the staff will be giving reports to Bill and Amy about, about E S Y extended school year, or even interventions, double dosing in the fall. So we really are, Michelle, thank you. As she knows, I, I, I think I've told her quite a few times how much I'm really pleased about the use of this grant and how the team came together very quickly. So within two weeks from the discussion of last week, board meeting until today, the grant was approved. So in starting March 1st, we will have 300 additional hours of support um, to understand and reteach. So I'm really excited. And Bill and Amy can talk structurally and how they're going to do it. We did, we, Michelle and I get to write it, these guys get to do it. Um, but anyway, so that's where we are. Um, learning model, we're, we're continuing improvement intervention. We really are going to have additional supports in our place March 1st.
Thank you, Michelle.
Um, it's really a team thing. It really is, so.
And, and, you know, Michelle and I were closely, it was really good. It was a lot of people involved, and great support from the, in the Hampton DOE. Um, great support from Joey Nichol in the Hampton DOE and, and helping us manage this. So it's good stuff. Phil, you want to just talk about where we are and go from there?
Sure. People think Michelle is just a numbers lady, but, um, yeah, she really cares about, um, about what goes on, because she knows that, you know, while she handles the numbers, those numbers are what, um, you know, educate kids. So Steve did a great job. So Amy and I will add a little bit to that, I guess. Um, you know, it's funny, in a pandemic, so much is different, but one thing that really isn't all that much different is, is overall our academic strategy. So now that we're back in person, which, by the way, is, is a wonderful thing. It's, it's been a really good week, except for that little snow day that occurred. Um, we're assessing our kids, and we're going to continue that, uh, you know, certainly during this month. Uh, primarily, uh, primarily literacy, uh, math, and in other ways, we're not, uh, at the moment going to give a digital test, partly because we don't really have the devices. Um, but, um, the Fawness and Pennell, which is our benchmarking program, is really accurate, and it's pretty much teacher to student, and it's not digital, you know, in the sense that we don't have to use a, a device, but it's really accurate. It gives us a nice sense of where kids are at, gives us a lot of information, not just a, you know, a number or a letter range. But we're assessing our kids in early March, um, right after vacation, we're going to have a data team. I'm, I'm sure we've talked about this before. It, it sounds geeky, and it is a little bit, but, uh, basically, it's a group of, uh, well, it's a classroom teacher, it, it gather along with a special educator or a reading person, myself, the counselor. Um, and we get together and really talk about kids, especially those that we're, we're most concerned about. And that's something we generally do three times a year anyway. And this year is all goofy, but we're definitely going to do it, uh, in March. And then we make decisions based on, you know, the qualitative information we know about kids, but also some of the quantitative, uh, data we have, which is a little less at this point than it would be in a normal year because of our, uh, well, you know, more than two-month remote time. And so, um, after that, I think we'll have a, a, a much better idea of which kids especially need, um, the support um, to, to move forward. And the 150 hours that Steve talked about with the grant, unfortunate, Amy has a couple people, I have one person that is, um, her job is .6. She's one of our reading specialists. And, uh, so she has time in her schedule. It's really wonderful, and she's so well-connected anyway. So she'll be able to, um, to do at least a couple hours a day. Uh, really all the way from March 1 to the end of the year is the way we've, we've planned, uh, the grant money. And then I think, as we talked, um, last board meeting about a report or a vision, that will conclude, again, probably April, after April vacation, we sort of talked about it the last meeting, uh, in a, in a good direction report, because we'll know, especially the kiddos that are having the most trouble, we'll know, uh, how to go forward both, um, in the summer, because we do hope we can do some summer work as well as next fall, because it's not going to be done. You know, we can't wash our hands of this, uh, uh, gap probably in the summer and say we're all set. We're also going to focus primarily on K1. Uh, anecdotally, and I, I told Steve I wouldn't say this because it's dangerous in front of, uh, the board and all the people listening, but anecdotally, I think second and third grades, it's doing pretty well. Again, we, we need to get some numbers, we need to firm it up. But in talking to teachers, uh, they're pretty happy about sort of the lack of regression we're seeing and, um, the growth that a lot of kids have made. I think, if that's true, I think a lot of that is due to the fact that they may be getting double-taught, in a sense. I think parents have have kicked in big time, as well as, of course, teachers have done such a great job with remote learning, and we've had some good resources, the technology has worked. Um, so, but we'll see, we have to really get better data. But regardless, uh, you know, K1 just doesn't do remote learning as well, just the nature of their age. Uh, and of course, all the way through, you know, K to 12, there's always kids that, whether you're doing remote or in-person, are, are going to struggle in different areas, and we have a responsibility to, to meet their needs. So, uh, we're kind of, you know, after learning really pretty much today or yesterday, I think. We're kind of, you know, after learning really pretty much today or yesterday, I think Michelle sent me an email. We're pretty bullish on on this extra. Tutoring, we're gonna be able to do, and we're feeling pretty good about, you know, making a difference. So I I hope parents will will have some of their fears, you know, calmed a little bit. And again, we're feeling pretty confident. So that's the perspective from Harold. I know Maple pretty much has a similar perspective, but a little different way of probably going about it. So. Can I pass it to Amy or should we stop for questions now? Pass it to Amy. Jim says, pass it to you, Amy. Take it away.
I also just wanted to thank Michelle. You know, she is our business administrator, but I'm always amazed at how creative she is about how we can use resources, and she really does care about the kids. And the buildings and the staff. And so thank you, Michelle, for, you know, I know that this is a team effort and but we really just appreciate your your thought about how to bring this to both the schools. Similar to what Bill talked about, we're going to be looking at Maple to use those 75 hours to look at literacy and math. We are going to use our some digital tests to be able to identify the kids. So when we come back from February break, we will administer the STAR and the Ames Web. And what's great is that we have winter data on all of the students in Maple Street right now. So. Our fourth graders took the winter Ames Web and STAR last year at Harold Martin. Our fifth graders have it, our sixth graders have it. So we'll be able to look at the longitudinal data. From winter to winter and be able to identify the students that perhaps made not as much gain as they had in the past. And so we are at the early stages of figuring out who would be eligible for this additional intervention. Had some initial conversations today with my leadership team. My literacy team and the math specialist about, you know, do we, how do we identify the kids that might benefit from this? Should we look at the kids that we really feel like if we were to provide. Really specialized targeted instruction between now and the end of the school year that their gap would would close pretty quickly. That's really, I think, what we might be thinking about about doing. Certainly, there are kids that are receiving their special ed services and their intervention services ongoing. And we've learned a lot from from those from from those those processes that some kids do better in person. So we are looking at if we're identifying kids and providing those intervention, working with the parents to have them come in for those extra hours, or some kids really do better if it's delivered remotely. So we want to be able to offer parents those those options. Like Bill, we are looking ahead to the summer and thinking about how we can continue to offer learning opportunities across the board. Historically, our E S Y program is targeted at students that have I E Ps or special education or five oh fours, or you know, we also invite kids that are at risk. But we've really been thinking about how can we use some of our other resources to provide opportunities for all kids. We were fortunate, as you know, to have the Huffington Education Foundation purchase I X L for the elementary schools, and our our membership will last, and that's a literacy and math. Tool that we can use. And also, my my reading team creates a really great reading challenge. I don't know if you've had Maple Street students in the past, Andrea Folsom, looking at you, Helena reads a lot of books. And so we've had some opportunity to have, you know, kids do some really great learning through the summer as well. So really, how can we create. More opportunities and make them more robust based on the data that we're going to be collecting. I think I I think similar to Bill, you know, we're gonna use our data teams, we're gonna use a lot of the structures that we already have in place. But we're really excited about being able to use this extra intervention time.
Thanks, Amy and Bill, and maybe kind of do the elementary schools. If there's questions, then we then we can move on to the middle high school. So are there any questions for Amy and Bill? Andrea, you're up. So I bet you do.
I I am. I was, I'm so excited about this, the additional supports that we're gonna be giving. I think that that is such a creative. Thing, and I was so happy to see it turn around so quickly. I was wondering, with these extra hours, is this something that is going to be provided? By folks that we already have in the school, being able to do more work to provide those additional hours, or is this something where we need to hire someone? From outside of the school district? And and if we do have to hire, I don't know how, like, how long would that take?
As Bill said, at Harold Martin School, we have a part time teacher that we're adding hours to. So that's there in. We are fortunate, one of our models that I think is quite exceptional is we have a couple of instructional assistants at Maple Street School who are certified teachers. So we'll be utilizing a couple of certified instructional assistants, restructure their time. To actually serve as as highly qualified teachers for the for this grant, they have to be certified teachers deliver this. And so one has a master's degree and one has some experience. So we're restructuring some time and adding it to a part time position, but they all are certain. Does that help?
No, that helps because it means we can do it quickly.
I'm actually mad at Steve because he said he had good news for me today and had to wait all day to find out this what this is what it was. And I'm I'm excited to hear about the additional support, Amy and Bill. I think this is great for our students, and it just. Something that we had talked about in our last meeting and something that I alluded to a little bit earlier in my my opening statement. And I'm excited to see this, and I'm very happy to hear about the summer. I really think that this will be a great time if things are better with COVID, that we can get these these students in person. I think the one thing, you know, I'd like to see the data, you know, that you guys collect over the next couple of months as a board to see if there's anything that this board can do to help you guys. If it's, you know, once those hours are gone, anything we can do to help, I definitely would love to be a part of that process. Thank you, Michelle, for finding that additional funds to do this. This is really great news. Thank you, Steve, for making me wait.
Sure. And and just, there is a, we, Michelle and I received notice of the next tranche of, you know, of of funds, whether it's. It's not really Esther, but it's that that kind of funds. And it is, it is projected to be four times our original, so somewhere around $150,000. And one of the uses of that funds is to overcome learning loss as well. So if we need to hire some people over the summer or to continue this model, if it's so successful that. You know, the board in in working with Mike want to continue this model in the fall, there will be some funds for that model as well. But we'll have. You know, you, three months, or three, four months of real good intense accelerated growth loop approach to the learning loss. We'll see if we can get some bang for it. But I think there are some grant funds that will help us summer as well in the fall.
Perfect. Any any other questions or thoughts for Amy or Bill? All right. I don't know, Chris and Rebecca. Hand over to you guys.
Thanks, Jim. And I think I'll certainly share that the excitement that Bill and Amy have had, being able to see kids again in the building is it's just been. A reminder of how much we we missed having the kids in the building, in the hallways, having the chance to check in with them. See them in the classroom in front of their teachers. It really is what brings life back to the building. So it's it's been, it was, it's kind of like the first week of school all over again, except it's a little colder than it was back in September. So it's been really nice to see them back in the building and to see the teachers, you know, get back to work in our in our school. And 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 kind of building off of what Seth talked about, I want to thank Matt Kroegman and all of the officers of N H S. That helped to organize those inductions. It was their first virtual one, as far as I know, that we've done. So as we continue to try to reinvent how we continue with some of our traditions in our school. That was a that was a new one for me. So we had a great evening just honoring our current and new members. And our sports teams have continued to do well, and we'll talk a little bit about that, I think, on the next agenda item. Currently, as you know, we've been. In that full remote mode until now. And in talking with the administrative council, I had asked for their feedback on, since we had gone full remote. How have they felt about their delivery of curriculum? And and they have all talked, they all talked about how the pacing has been able to pick up for them. You know, they've had all the students together. It's led to more engaging discussions. And allowing to work with the technology that is now allowed in Google Classroom to break out and do breakout rooms. That has allowed them to. You know, manage and monitor small convert smaller conversations, and they they have thought that that has been a nice addition to the Google Classroom ever since they've added the breakout rooms. We're certainly not caught up to where we would like to be or where we would be if if things were normal. But we have made up some ground in some areas. Our A P teachers, the ones, the teachers on the administrative council that also teach A P classes. Are still feeling pretty confident that they'll be able to teach most of their curriculum. We do have a meeting with the administrative guidance team to talk about the A P exams in the spring. So we'll we'll talk about some several different models that they're looking at. To offer students to take their those assessments. In 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 this current model that we, you know, like I said, it's it's nice to see the kids in the building, and we'll go back to being remote next week with the facilitated option. Those numbers are a little down from where they were before. We have about 31 middle school kids signed up for the facilitated option, and 44 high school students signed up right now. For the facilitated, may get a few more over the next couple of days. But those numbers are pretty much kind of leveled off as I've been watching those. Rebecca's really been working hard with Tana to to update the spreadsheet that we're keeping all of those names on. In the, but we also have students who are going to remain, you know, remaining fully remote this week, you know, we're about 30 middle school students, 103 high school students. So. You know, those are where the numbers are at right now in our current model. As far as what the future holds for for looking at what we'd like to consider for the schedule. Starting March first, as you heard Steve mention, we met for about an hour today, talking about several different things. But one of those items was was just our current model and what we might move to. So I have a scheduling meeting on Monday with our scheduling team. So we'll we'll talk about a few things to bring some ideas forward to the school board. Moving forward, obviously synchronous teaching and delivery of instruction is part of that discussion. I've had the opportunity to check in over the last couple of days with several teachers that have. Begun begun this week to do that synchronous approach or try that synchronous approach. And some, it's been a learning curve. I think the, if I had to pick out one piece of information that they've continued to share for some of these teachers who have really worked through that learning curve is that it. It's maintaining the computer screen and the students in front of them, going back and forth and trying to make sure they're giving everybody equal attention, because that's just the nature of our our staff, is they want to make sure they're working, giving everybody. You know, equal time as much as possible is a struggle at times. So Donna Zeca and I were talking about that today as well and and talking about, well, when when we move to everybody being synchronous, maybe we need to help them by developing some guidelines. So we'll be talking about giving them some tools and things to consider about working with students on a computer and directly in front of them. And. On top of that, in talking with some other staff, they have thought it's gone really well. They've had two screens in front of them where one screen, they have the Google Classroom, they're seeing all their students, and then their other computer or their laptop. Is utilized to deliver the presentation and and help them with the instruction that they're giving on that day. So I think it it's just a, you know, getting practice like anything else. We just have to become more comfortable utilizing the technology. And, you know, I just want to thank Mike Cody, Matt Stone, and Donna Zeca. You know, the the three of them have worked together to help support our staff, get technology in their in in the classrooms or expand their technology. In some cases, we've added a different camera that allows them to see more of the classroom. Certainly adding a screen is helpful, as I mentioned. And Donna put together, working with Matt Stone, a slideshow that she had sent out, I had shared it with our faculty through my Kelly's Corner on the weekend. That really just went over and outlined again, we're we're working to help them feel more comfortable with the technology. So, you know, just some of the basic tech, obviously, the screen, like we've talked about additional microphones or better microphones. Or or better webcams. But then going into a little bit more in depth, talking about some addition, you know, additional or optional items. If you need a tripod, or if you need a different set of earbuds. And these are some things that we've purchased and had in the library. It was kind of fun to walk through the library and seeing Donna opening up, you know, all of this new, it was like Christmas in February, it was kind of fun. To see all this and additional document cameras. And she did a really nice job just putting in a nice slideshow to just help, you know, our staff feel a little bit more comfortable. And another nice tool we've gotten to play with is just a new graphic design pen tablet that allows for some graphic design. Allowing students to annotate, you know, either reading materials that they have on the tablet, live streaming cameras. So we're trying to get some of this technology into the hands of the teachers for them to try. So we're looking forward to just seeing how that works. You know, we've had teachers who have taken. Advantage of that simply like a document camera to help them in the classroom. So, you know, we're 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 getting into it. There are teachers who are who have jumped right in, feel very comfortable with technology. We have some other teachers that are dipping their toes in that. Really, in the math, English, and social studies areas are really where that's kind of happening right now. Not with every teacher, but those are the main three areas, I would say, that that's happening. That I've been able to see, at least in the in the three days that we've been in. Of course, it's Murphy's Law, right? The first day back with kids, we get a snowstorm. So. As luck would have it, if I had no luck at all, it'd just be bad luck. But we're we're looking to and forward to moving to that synchronous model. I look forward to my meeting after school on Monday with the scheduling committee. And then working a little bit with admin council too, to get their feedback when I meet with them on Thursday. So I think I think that's everything that I had on my notes. Happy to answer any questions about where we may be headed, what we're doing now.
All right. Questions or thoughts for for Chris?
Chris, I'll jump in. So you mentioned. Math and social studies and English, practicing with the synchronous, I would imagine that science and maybe world language, business, that kind of stuff would be. Sort of lend itself towards synchronous. Are there any? You know, is it gonna be harder in art and music to do synchronous? Or what's what? What's the feedback you're getting there?
Yeah, I I, well, you bring up music, but so it's it's. I don't, so I walked into the guidance office, they, Bridget was in there, and her head was pointed back because she 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 dipped her toe in it today, and Bridget Gaddy is our music teacher, for those that may be on the call that don't know. And it was just exhausting for her today in music. So but she's trying. You know, we've talked about Rebecca and I, and I think we touched upon it with our discussion with Steve today. I think in in some areas like P E, you know, I think it could be a little bit more difficult to do some of the synchronous, because you're gonna have kids doing activities right in front of you, and then kids at home doing activities. But, you know, Dave's really working hard at it. I think he would like to try and make it work. I know Rebecca's had an opportunity, I think, to see some of that work. I have not yet. I just haven't had a chance to make it down there in the last two days. But I look forward to hopefully doing that tomorrow. But I think there would be, you know, culinary, like family and consumer science, I think that would be hard to do. So there may be some areas where, you know, it would still be just meeting with those students who come into the class, but not doing synchronous. But I think we're gonna, like, as Steve and I talked about, we're gonna, you know, we would like, we want to do synchronous everywhere we can. But I think certainly in the in the core subjects, including world language, you know, we can get there.
So I'll just cut to the chase, because we've all had enough long meetings. Are you feeling confident that we can commit to the community that after winter break, we could be teaching synchronous as the standard at the middle high school?
That's where I am headed, Rob. Yep. I gotta make sure we still have all the technology that we need for those teachers that want a second screen. We put that out with the pilot teachers. And as I mentioned, Donna's put this out. So. Working with Matt and Mike on that to make sure we have everything that we need to to do that. Pam Moscow was another teacher, I should have mentioned her earlier where I saw that she was working on that. In the middle school. So we're we're getting there. Teachers are, like I said, getting more comfortable with change becomes, you know, there's some hesitation. But now we have to, you know, really kind of, you know, speed up that train, so to speak.
Do you have the technology, Chris, to do it? Do you have everything you need?
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting there. We had ordered. Can't remember how many screens Matt had ordered, but we, you know, he, Mike Cody's been going around installing those screens. He did that prior to. The start of February, and he's he's been hopping around, getting those screens set up, making sure that the teachers understand how to. Set their laptop up so they can see, you know, like their kids on one screen and their presentation on another. So we're we're getting there, getting there.
So what I, I think what Rob did, you alluded to, maybe I'm I'm off, is that we could allocate the core subjects to where we have the technology in place and implement synchronized. Teaching. So if this board says, hey, these are the subject we want to, we want to, we want to implement, that you have the technology, and we want to set a date. And I think that's important because, I mean, I feel, and I mean this with respect to the school district, that we keep kicking this discussion down. And I feel that we owe it to the community to set a date to the community, saying, this is it, and that we get to speed up.
No, I'm with you. And, you know, we've met and and I had discussions. There's there's a lot of components to this move. We have the standard technology, but there's some as as. We have the standard technology, but there's some, as Chris alluded to, Matt's looking for specialized technology, very specific to science and very specific like the tablets. There's also a piece that we're, you know, the, the, the human resources side of this as well, we've talked about. Some changes in some of our procedures regarding the, you know, we've talked about the necessary remote learning specialist, so. There's an HR component that we're working through because we know more now. There's, we have standard technology like crazy, but we're looking for some specialized, but yes, our, our goal is to the fullest extent possible, March first will be fully synchronous and have a schedule proposed that supports that. But there, there's a lot of components and making sure we can staff this and making sure that we can do this, but we're working really hard on, on having that happen.
Can I ask about the staffing piece a little bit as I'm? You know, I look on Ed jobs and every school district in the state is looking for IAs and looking for substitutes and. You know, where are we at in terms of our ability to hire on a pay scale that respects the people that are currently under contract and perhaps can bring in folks? You know, so in other words, if, if other school districts are paying a hundred dollars a day for subs and. I'm not sure if we're still at seventy-five, but I think we are. You know, is it worth a discussion to say we need to bump that up and we need to, you know, put that in the monitor as well as Ed jobs and let the world know that? You know, we want you to come here first, we don't, we, we need the help, if we need the help, let's, let's pay them a rate that's going to get them here.
Yeah, no, I'm with you, we have a. We have a, a, a full-time sub in the queue, ready to come just to Hawkeington, we're just waiting for background check and that, so that's coming up to March one, we've tried to hit some call. Recent college graduates and tried to do that, Rob, so. We're, so we're trying to acquire more resources, but we're also reviewing every week, you know, our, our current. Work and every, every staff member as well, we're trying to make it all work. But, um, yes, I mean, I'm not.
I guess my.
We get people who are very interested in the Hopkins, you know, connected to the Hopkins.
Right, I, I guess my specific question is, it seems to me that our. Our pay rate is less than other districts in the way that the sub pool works where people can go in and see where there's a need and pick. If I'm waking up in the morning or the night before and say, oh, there's, there's. Two places that need me tomorrow and one pays X and the other pays Y, well, I'm going to go to Y if it's paying more. So that, that's my question, are, are we missing the boat here a little bit because of what our pay rate is?
Yeah, good question, yeah, we can certainly look at that, we can certainly try and increase it, but like the recent, the, the recent hire for a full-time sub. Who was interested in our district was because of their connection to the district and didn't even ask them. You know, he's coming, he's only going to work in Hopkins because his story wants to. But we can try.
So I'm, I'm, I'm excited to hear that March first. You know, we can, we can make that switch as much as possible to synchronous, I think it's great and. I also understand that it's like for teaching, this, it's not, it's not natural and it's probably not the easiest thing to do and so I. I, I, I guess I, I'm glad we're doing it and I'm glad we're going to try and I know that it's not going to go smoothly for everybody all the time and that's okay. And I, I guess, I just wanted to say that out loud at, at a meeting that. You know, we've been adaptive, adaptively managing this whole year. And this will be another example of that, and so for some, it's going to be seamless and go great, and for some, it's going to be a struggle. And it, it may be frustrating and I just think for our teaching staff. At least one, I understand, I know my colleagues do on the board as well, that perfection is probably not what we're striving for here, but. I think we're going to learn by doing and so by, by, by doing, there may be some, some things that don't work great. But I, I think, you know, from the board's perspective, we're, we're pretty understanding. And I just think the, the trying to get more of it done, to get the curriculum delivered, having more students in class is, is what we're striving for and. And so I, I don't really know what I'm saying other than. You know, perfection isn't the goal here, I, I think, you know, sound quality education is a goal. And curriculum delivery is a goal and it, it seems that synchronous is the way to kind of get all of what we want or at least most of what we want. And so I'm just excited that, you know, we, we have the commitment to do it and to try it and to learn as we go, so thank you guys for, for making that happen.
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate that comment because I, but it's, it's hard to pull our staff back, you know, they, they, they have a high bar for themselves. And I think that's what makes the brand of Hawkeington, right? So I, I certainly appreciate that, you know, they really want to do it well a, as well as they can under stressful circumstances, so I appreciate that comment.
And I, and I, I, I want them to do well too, so don't take my comment as I don't. But yeah, I just, I don't want that to stand in the way of us doing it, so I, I think we're on the same page, I appreciate it.
I mean, I'm confident they're going to do the best they can, I mean, you guys know I attended. Class last year and I understood the hiccups with it being done. But I mean, it comes with fine tune and, and experience, just like anything and I, I'm excited, you know, as a parent. To see that happen and I'm excited to hear from the feedback from the community and from the students when it does happen, so. I thank the leadership team for a, a March first goal, which is my anniversary of, of this being implemented, so thank you guys very much.
And I don't think they often, I don't think the teachers often know how well it's going, I watched Kate Regluth in Spanish having Simon Says going on with kids at home. And kids at school in Spanish and from my perspective, my at-home child was engaged and so, you know, it's. I would encourage all the teachers watching, take risks and if, if one risk doesn't work, the next one will, but the kids are happy with the effort and. So that, that really should be the mantra going forward.
Thank you very much, Seth, I appreciate it.
Just jumping in and I agree with this, I think it's a great opportunity for empathy. If there's ever a time when you're experiencing change, it's middle school and high school, and so I think the students can empathize with the teachers. And the teachers can empathize with the students, you can all be in it together. But I do have a question, so I think it's really interesting that the facilitated option has such low numbers. And I was wondering how, how is that being, I don't have kids in the middle high school and so I just don't know, how is that being? Presented to the community, do folks realize that if they would like their child to go in, that they're able to? Or do they feel that their child must meet some threshold in order to, to go in?
We, we didn't put a threshold on, on this go-around and one of the last wide mailings that. Ms. Gagnon and I had put together, it was in there and that's what generated this next go-around of. People signing up for the facilitated piece, I know it was catching some people's attention because we both. Were responding to either emails or phone calls about what is the facilitated remote option. Because the first time we kind of, we did a little bit more. For a lack of a better phrase, targeting of a certain population that we knew were really struggling based off of our SSTT meetings and teacher input and, and things along those lines. But this opened up a little bit more. I don't have a real answer for you, Andrew, why it's lower, I don't know if it's just because. Their students have adapted better to being at home and learning at home, I'm not sure, I haven't asked that question specifically.
Yeah, I just, the, the feedback that at, at least I've heard or received it. It has appeared to me or felt to me that perhaps parents don't realize that their kids, kids could be in next week. And so that's, that's why I was just wondering. Because I, somehow it, it feels like maybe it's, it's being missed, I'm not sure.
I, I can jump in a little bit. So we did send out an invitation via email to everybody and then we included it in Hawk News again. For the past two weeks as a, as an invitation. I can say probably, Andrea, the huge difference is the first time we did this and we sent out, we sent out the same surveys to everybody. We compiled a list of everybody who didn't respond to the survey and we personally called them all. So Mrs. Montor, God bless her, spent three days literally calling every single household. We just didn't have the capacity this time around to call households, so we did put it out. And we've targeted specifics that we really know, each of the, the middle school teams. Made lists of who they really needed to see. SST made lists, guidance counselors made lists, and we've made phone calls to those, case managers made lists. So all of those populations got personalized phone calls and encouragement. But we just didn't have the capacity, we, we received little over half back of the surveys that we. Sent out, but we just couldn't make the two hundred extra phone calls at this point. But now's a great opportunity to say. If people want to come in, please come in and we're running it, it's going to be Tuesday through Friday. So it's not like a team A, team B, it's just Tuesday through Friday, so anybody that feels like they're struggling or just wants that connection. Please come in, we would, we would need to know, we've got a plan for you so we don't reach capacity in classes, but. We'll put those links back out, we can put it on Aspen again, so that people can fill that out. But coming in Tuesday through Friday, every day following your schedule, so going to all of your classes. We've, Matt Stone did order us a bunch of headsets with microphones so that there is a part there where you'll be. Participating in your class online still, even though you're in the class with your teacher, but then when we do breakout rooms, we do independent work. Your teacher's there to do the one-on-one with you, so it's a great opportunity to have that and it's a good opportunity for our teachers to kind of take that next step of synchronized teaching. The majority is online, but some's in the classroom, so you can kind of get that feel a little bit, which is great, so we would love. More people to join us for that process over the next two weeks, we just need to know ahead of time so we don't hit capacity in classrooms.
No, thank you, that's really, that's helpful, this is sometimes when I don't have a kid at the school, I don't, I just don't know what's happening. So thank you, I appreciate that.
It really was those phone calls the first time around. Nothing like a phone call from the school each day.
So Rebecca, for this round of facilitated, the kids are going to be in classrooms with their teachers, it's not like somebody's teaching remote and they're going to be supported.
Well, we have some teachers who are remote, so they'll be, we, we have locations for them, but otherwise, yeah, we, we did the first time, we had people in a, in a room and it was too much to sit there for.
Right.
A six-hour school day, that was, that was too much, so this time, move around, go to all your classes, go to study hall like you would go to study hall, go to the library if you need to go to the library, have lunch in the cafeteria, just. Following your regular schedule, so it's, it's like going to school, but part of it is still online because we're doing that hybrid piece there.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional comments? I want to thank. All of, all of you guys, all the, all the administration team for, for coming and joining us and for all your thoughtful comments and, and your great work. I, I know, we, we've been saying it for the last, you know, eleven months, this is a lot of work, it's different work, I, I think, than. We were all thought we'd be doing over the last eleven months, but. Thank you so much for your efforts and for your time and for leading your, your schools and your teams, it's. I, I know we keep saying it's a lot, but it's a lot, so thank you. Before we leave this topic, any, any other thoughts, comments, questions or anything from the board? All right, well, thank you all, I think Steve, unless there's. Any other items, I think Steve's going to demote you guys, which he likes to do.
I'll keep Chris and Rebecca up just for the athletic piece.
Perfect.
But Amy, yeah, I think I got him.
I think you got him.
So just a quick update, Dan is at a game right now, but I, I did put a letter in just from Dan, so just a couple of updates. Just the Alpine ski season ends beginning of next week, so that's quick, so they have their state championship next week. Nordic is, Rob alluded to is a little bit longer, they're going for a little bit longer, but that's coming up as well. The middle school sports program will be ending right either two weeks, so there might be one game during February break, but that will be it, so there are only about two weeks if you. If this week is done, we got about two weeks left of the middle school and maybe one game during a break. The high school sports, so three weeks after this week, three weeks of regular season, which is two plus February break. And then in two weeks from now, we'll talk about where we are for playoffs and we'll make sure we have that delivery conversation, see where we are and the teams and the, and the numbers are. So that's just an update where we are and hockey's had a couple of games, but they're only a couple of weeks out, it's going to be a short season for the hockey program. So. So what Dan has made a request. And so we have, our next week is senior week, it really is our last opportunity because of, of just the configuration. It's, so on Monday and Thursday, we have home games for the girls and, and boys and the request has come in for just the senior parents. And for the girls program, it's six parents and for the boys program, it's a total of ten parents. As your superintendent, do I believe we can manage it, how Dan alluded to, in a safe way in that building because of those limited numbers, yes? Now, there is, I think I talked about this before, there's a continuum of where we are, some schools have, have two first, two people per athlete, both away and home. Some have not, none at home, but they do away, that's like us, so when Hawkeington goes away, some schools allow it. And there's one school that will not play with any, anybody in the stands, either at home or away, so just, there's a little bit of continuum. So Dan, Chris and I are requesting just some support for very limited, just senior only parents for that one game next week.
And that would just be for our, our students, right, it wouldn't be visitor team, it would just be the home team.
It is literally six people more than we have and ten people more than we have, that's it. And actually, we've reduced a little bit because I don't, we don't, for, for a while, there was a couple of people on the camera, like I was on the camera one night, now that's robotic type thing, so we're actually. Not many people in the room, but we'd like to support, you know, some of this has been for kids, it's been, you know, twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year experience in the basketball world in Hawkeington. Have the parents see them live one last time in, in the school.
Steve, not everybody can say they've been replaced by a robot, so.
I was, yeah.
So when we, you know, when we went forward with the, with the winter season, we, we did restrict. You know, any fans and so this is really just a, a question about comfort, like how to, how does the board feel about? For the, for this one game next week lifting that and allowing for, you know, what Dan has put forward in that memo to us.
Do you want me to break the ice again, guys, is that how, how you want to do it?
Well, if you're handing out Snickers, no.
Yeah, well, right here. So I had a little bit of thinking about, thinking about this today and, you know, I want to stay with the community. You know, thank you for. Understanding, you know, what we decided with fans in the beginning of the season, I think. You know, it's been, it's been good watching it on TV, I've been yelling at the screen a lot, telling the players to pull their mask up and get one tighter because it's been falling down a lot, so. I've been yelling a lot, but they can't hear me. And for me, it's been enjoyable to watch, but I've also been very, you know, nervous as, as I was with being against indoor winters, winter sports and I, I still stand by that. But I think one thing that's important to think about right now for me, as a board member, is that we're in school right now. And we're six feet apart. And a classroom of ten students or so around there, where we're asking for three, three, you know, about six at the girls game and ten parents. Add another one where they'll be twelve feet apart. And. As, as a board member and as a parent, I, I can't take that away, you know, because we are in school. And we are delivering that opportunity to students and. You know, for me, I would ask Steve to please share Dan's request publicly so people can see. What he's proposed with the check-ins and COVID procedures, I think it's very important that the community sees what Dan has prepared and. And, and make sure that's, that's out there. And the other thing I'd like to think about with the leadership team and with Steve is. Where are we with our other seniors that are indoor activities that is impactful for them to get recognition from their, from their family? You know, we talk about sports, but what about, you know, I don't know what, I'm not sure what's going on with drama, you know, I know when I was in high school, whenever it was a senior's last. Performance, a, a parent would give their child a rose or whatever it was, where are we with thinking outside of box to show recognition for the other students who do not perform sports? So as a board member, I'm. I want to show recognition, like I'm not going to hold a parent back, but I do want us to find a way of recognizing the other students that. Do activities indoors that we can have recognition for them too, so I'd like to have that discussion.
Sure, and this does not prohibit any other organization or any other group coming forward, whether it is for robotics or whether. You know, some of those continue all year and we'll be talking about that and, and honestly, we could go to the pavilion and have some of these outside, you know, a little bit more, so. Norm, we absolutely, this is not exclusive of any other opportunities. We absolutely always, Chris, Rebecca and I listen in, in, to any opportunity that we want to support, we really are in the yes business as much as possible, that's what we really like to do. But yes, I, I promise you that Chris, Rebecca and I haven't said no to anybody, oh, you can't do this, when we hear it, we try to do it in a safe way. But sure, and, and at the end of the, hopefully, we're, it'll be warmer and some of these recognitions can be outside, like Chris and Rebecca did the graduation outside. Or, you know, so we're hoping to, to, but yes, please know, we would never say, you know, we would always try to work with people to find a way to do it.
Can you refine with sharing Dan's thing?
I think I, I'm pretty sure I put it in support materials on the website today. I can't swear to it because I don't want to click the wrong button during the meeting. But I will make sure that it's in support materials, but I'm about 94% sure I put it up.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Is there anybody, is there anybody, um, I guess opposed to, to what Dan and Steve um, and Chris have put forward? So I'm, I'm seeing no opposition. So I think you guys got the green light. Um, thanks for thinking that through and, and thanks for bringing it to the board. And, and I know Dan's at a game, but um, please pass along our thanks to him for um, for his diligence of putting that together. And, and I know I mentioned so to the COVID protocols that are involved and um, just want to thank him for the, for the thoughtfulness of that.
Thank you. No, I appreciate, I know the families will appreciate it. I don't have a senior, I only have a junior, so hopefully next year it'll be different. But I know I would appreciate this if this was the last time I could see that. So thank you all. And with that, I think I'll, I'll Rebecca and Chris, they can.
Good night.
Night.
Thank you.
Um, so just uh, quickly, the last component on uh, operating learning in a pandemic, um, the daily new cat, new cases. And uh, we have seen the cases drop, you know, since we're, we're, so we're at 32.3 um, based on the, in the Hampshire D H H S numbers. Um, and so we're, we're cloaching, we, you know, for the, we've been in the tipping point, right, which is 25 above for a while um, in the Merrimack County. So I think we're, we're heading in the right direction and in two weeks, hopefully we'll be where we haven't been in a while, which is the accelerated spread to the 10 and 24. So um, you know, I do appreciate the board's support of the flexibility and working with the nurses on applying this and, and trying to run school as much as we can, like we did this week at Harold Martin. So thank you for that. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. Any, any comments or questions on, on the matrix?
Can you just clarify a little bit, the, uh, the six kids in quarantine at Harold Martin School? You said four were due to exposure at school so that they come into contact with somebody who was positive or what exactly does that mean?
Yeah, we had a, we had a staff member positive and through contact tracing, uh, Jean, Jean Picard's work is now there's two Jeans over there, Jean Picard's work. Um, and based on the guidelines and the contact tracing, yes, uh, they are in quarantine. And two, as I said, due to travel, which means they left New England. Um, uh, and I don't know any, honestly, I don't know any more than that, except it was due to travel.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. That, that brings up um, just another question that um, that I had. So I received a survey today from the Maple Street School asking about travel. Um, and I guess I should have asked this one, our principals were still at, is that something that the other uh, schools are planning? If they're not planning on doing it, I would recommend that the other schools also plan on sending out a survey.
Yeah, well, yeah, just like we did in the uh, earlier, we'll try and get a handle of where we are um, staff-wise, community-wise, and make sure we have great communication. So no, uh, yep, it's on our agenda. Oh, I, I heard that Bill, the HMS is going up very soon.
All right. Um, so Steve, uh, going to hand it over, I think the norm for the building committee update.
It's like ping pong, back and forth, right? Um, real quickly, so we had a meeting on Tuesday um, for the building committee and the discussion was about adults. Um, right now, um, before we finalize them with a recommendation from the building committee to bring to you guys on March 4th. Steve and Michelle are going through what we promised to the town um, to make sure we are delivering everything on that checklist. They're going to finalize that, bring it, uh, make sure we check all the boxes. And in our next meeting, um, which is before this meeting, the building committee will deliberate the adults with a, pretty much exact amounts what we have left in the project. And our recommendation will be brought to this board for you guys to see what we plan on doing. So we're getting closer and closer and closer, but we want to make sure before we commit to something, everything that's been promised that the district meeting has been done.
Norm, can I ask a question on, on at least what you're going to bring to the board for that? I mean, will, will you have included, like obviously your recommendations, which is great. Are you going to have additional items that, that were at least on the list, but that didn't make, you know, the list of your recommendations? Just so the board can sort of see what else was being considered?
Like what was left from the project that we didn't include the initial project?
No, I guess, so just thinking about the, the adult list, if you had, um, you know, I'm going to make this up, right? But carpeting is in, but the, the, you know, the, the gold toilet's not in.
On top of the S and U office?
Yeah, well, we see the list that like what, what is being recommended and then what was not recommended, just, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not sure we were just to see that list.
Absolutely. Steve, I see no issue with us bringing that to the board for them.
No, no, no. We've got a huge list. And what drives it is the ability of Bonne Page and Stone to release funds out of their um, project management contingency. And we're trying to get to a point where they're about 60% spent in the project where they feel comfortable. So absolutely aware of the priorities are and where we're in the second tier or third tier. Um, uh, Turner, uh, Doug and Turner developed an exhaustive pricing list, which some of this stuff is going to happen someday, it's just not now. And so having that price is priceless. And Michelle is working really hard to make sure we update our CIP. Um, for example, one of the things that's going to be in our CIP is a cowl wall uh, at two of our schools, that's the fiberglass uh, up that's, um, you know, it's going to be in, and we have to replace it in a little while. So um, again, we're learning more, but absolutely, we will have the list of the next iteration um, of, of what, you know, will happen. You got it.
Thank you. I shouldn't have used the gold toilet as my example. I apologize for that. Um, any other questions or thoughts on the building committee? Thank you, Norm. Um, all right. And so we have a update on the anti-discrimination policy.
All right. And just real quick, um, really proud that even through all this, we're still making headway in a number of areas. Um, the district's working really hard in this area. You'll hear next month where we are in um, students for 100, right? In renewables, we're still working hard in that area, but for tonight, um, just remember the, the legislature passed a law by October 15th of this year. We had to develop a uh, anti-discrimination policy as well as a plan. Um, we, Andrea, Seth and I worked on that, the board approved it. Um, and so that was always in, in, in the queue over the summer. Um, we did start this work. We had, one of our PD days was about some of this culture responsive anti-discrimination work, which is very successful. The staff really engaged. So working with Amy and the professional learning committee and the leadership team, um, we have expanded on the plan because we have learned, uh, our curriculum council meeting every month, we talk about culture responsive teaching uh, and how to, and how to expand what the current state and, and how to move it. And we've learned a lot from teachers about trying to get comfortable in these topics. And so what we've been able to do is through the title, title grant is we have uh, engaged the Southwest Center at Keene State to, and working with a family support team and Donna Dunlop, we're going to have a community book read um, on a, a topic recommended by Dottie Morris, who's a professor at Keene. Um, we are going to have a, a introductory event, Zoom, one night in March, for teachers and community members to talk about what is culture responsive teaching? Why this is important to do and how we do it and what you would expect as a, as a, as a parent that, that may come home. And some of the discussions we're going to have, um, we have a, a book read for faculty. Um, we have a session where um, the Southwest Center is going to come in and talk with administrators on how to lead culture responsive education, anti-discrimination work in our schools. Um, we have all district staff professional development activity planned for March 28th, about uh, three hours of breakout groups about digging in on this topic. And then we have uh, workshops over the summer for, for teachers and anybody who wants to attend about four workshops over the summer. Um, all connected to this anti-discrimination, culture responsive, social justice work in Hopkins in school district. Um, so we've really, really connected and really trying to support teachers and engage the community in this type of work heading forward. This will certainly part of the transition work um, with Mike as we go and it will certainly make this a deliberate and purposeful piece of our transition. Really, uh, really happy we're engaging on this, looking forward to learning um, from Keene State, from the community and all. So I think it's good work.
That's great work. Um, really glad we're doing it. Um, without a doubt, any, any questions for Steve? All right. So um, moving on to personnel, Steve.
Sure. Real quick, we've had a request and we're, we're able to accommodate a change in a Harold Martin School IA contract uh, to a 1.0 to a 0.72. And we're able to, because of the model, we were okay right now in adjusting that contract and support that employee. So that's an action item. And we have a, a um, Malaney Hibbert, I'm going to say Maloney, but if I do, Manny's going to be really mad. Malaney Hibbert is coming forward as a nominee for, to support a kindergarten. Um, so this is a position we had a, a different approach. We actually contracted with some support personnel early as we got to build this kindergarten. And where we are in, in the program, we uh, now understand the needs and we can support it with an instructional assistant. So um, we are, it's a nominee to support and it's a kindergarten new to us this year. It wasn't through our preschool program. Um, and so we are excited to bring um, uh, Maloney, uh, Malaney forward for nomination tonight.
Any questions for Steve on, on those personnel items? And these are action items. And so um, everybody sound, looks like they're prepared for that. All right. Um, and then school board schedule.
And if you saw it, it's a really exciting thing to do, to do the school board schedule between now and June. That's really exciting. So that means there's only a few more board meetings left. Seth, you only have a couple, if you saw it, and I'm not too far behind you, my friend. So uh, and I'll, I'll build it out more. This, to be honest, this wasn't built out tremendously thoroughly, but it was enough to get us started. Um, I did put the nomination for HGA, the nomination for Hess Admin Rights and Nomination, but I'll put some more policy work now that the budget is a little, is not, is now in communication stage and not development. Uh, and Seth and Andrew and I can do well, maybe not Seth, but we'll do some, we'll do some policy work and, and I'll continue that. But a couple of things that have come up since um, I put that in the packet as I did allude to in the previous. So we have a, a validated petition for SB2 and our, um, you know, the, the signatures have been validated. So I talked to, I appreciate what you said about, I'm, me too, I'm with Neil, just like you said, Jim, we're very unexpert. So uh, we would like to have a SB2 public hearing on February 18th at five o'clock. Yeah, that's what we did last year, if you remember, and then at 5:30 the board meeting. And, and um, we have to really decide that tonight because we have to start the posting. It's, the hearing has to be within 15 and 30 days of the voting date. And Neil confirms that that date works. And then we have to, Donna and Michelle and I have to make sure we post it 10 clean days, put it in the newspaper. So if you guys are all in, we'll have a public hearing at five o'clock on February 18th before that board meeting on SB2. And, and we, if you remember, this is one of our last in-person meetings last year. Uh, when we did it, I don't know if anybody remembers it, um, but, but it was our last in person. Is that okay with everybody's schedule?
That was our last in-person meeting?
It was pretty close. No, we had one, we had a funky one. Uh, that Seth alluded to earlier, but it was one of our last in-person meetings.
Interesting.
My first meeting was your last.
Right. But I think this was like right before that. That's what I'm trying to say. It wasn't our last, it was one of our. Yes, I remember that, Seth. Um, and then two weeks after that, um, we'd like to have a public hearing on withdrawal of, of, of funds from the maintenance trust to continue that work. Um, and you know, we'll have all the documentation and some of where, you know, we do furniture work out of there and any other projects. And we, again, we have to post 10 clean. And if that's okay, we'll start making sure that the um, the wheels are in motion to have those. And that would be again, that might be, well, we can do a five, but it could be a five, it could be a 515, you know what I mean? But um, just on your calendars, if we can schedule those, Michelle and I would like to keep working through our maintenance trust or CIP and doing that work. Now, again, budget development is behind us. It's now budget communication, which is a little bit different. We can start digging in again. I kind of go into Halloween to St. Patrick's Day, right, Michelle? It's budget, budget, budget. Is that okay with everybody?
That looks great. And then I would just, on the, um, the, the larger schedule Steve sent around, I would just ask any board member as, as your, you know, as Steve says, driving around thinking, if something comes to mind, like a topic or, you know, something that we may not have gotten to that it's sort of been sticking in your craw. Um, you know, let us know, let Steve know or let, you know, myself know and we can try to get those scheduled so that we're not, you know, we're not missing things. So don't take that as a done deal. If you have ideas, definitely pass them along for things you'd like to see, except for Seth, everybody else.
Love to build that out and I will build it out with some more stuff, but I just wanted to get the dates going and make sure we were okay for these.
Great. Um, and then we have a couple of financial items tonight, too.
It, uh, really pleased to bring forward privilege, uh, two donations for the robotics team, $2,000 in Slovenia and then a $500 from Hopkins Rotary. And those are action items that supported their season.
Outstanding. Um, and any questions for Steve on those?
A question. Um, how's the robotics team doing? I know they went so far last year and had such a great year. And I've missed like seeing and hearing about, about them. It's such a neat thing.
They had a virtual season. Um, so they had a much different, and you know, we can have um, Ms. Betts come, maybe something, that could be one of the things we could do and just talk about the virtual season. And see what it was like, happy to, but I know that they did compete and that it was a virtual, different type of season. Um, but I know that they, you know, they enjoyed it. Um, one of our Rotarians is very well connected and she reported down on Rotary about their virtual season this week.
Great, thanks.
I would just be really interested uh, to see how they do a virtual robotic season. So that would be kind of cool.
Yeah, I'll talk to Ms. Betts and we can arrange that in the next few meetings.
All right. Um, if nothing else, uh, this brings us to the second um, public comment opportunity of the evening. And so again, um, if you're an attendee and you wish to provide public comment, I just ask you to, to find the raise your hand button towards the bottom of your screen. And um, again, try to limit to three minutes and just give us your name and address. And so the first hand that's up is Tammy Clay. Hi, good evening, Tammy. Thanks for joining us.
Hi there. Am I on? I am.
You're on.
Tammy Clay, 62 Buckingham Lane. So I've got two questions. Um, one, because we lost the COVID reimbursement be, um, because we didn't get them. Oh, sorry. Let's start that ago. We lost the COVID reimbursement because the Chromebooks didn't arrive on time. Um, are they still on order? Question number one. And number two, who and how are they going to get paid for now if we don't have the COVID grant money? That's question one.
Yeah, well, we can take that one and Steve can probably answer better than I can, but I don't think we've lost the reimbursement, um, but we don't have the Chromebooks. But Steve, do you want to?
Sure. So yes, um, the Chromebooks are in order and there was a small component of the second trough of money that we had to return because we didn't have all the Chromebooks come, but we did have 157 come and that were in the grant that were supported. Um, and so how, Tammy, how are we going to, there's a couple of different ways that they can be paid for with the next trough of money, which is about 100, we expect about $160,000 coming. So that can be there. Um, we also have, there is a non-time limited, a, a second amount of money that is, is, you know, we have one that was December 30th, but this one is not time limited. So we could move, I think we've moved some of the funds over to the original Esser or grants. Um, so that's option two, uh, uh, or that's currently option one, but we may have another grant. And if both of those get maxed out with other purchases, the board did um, uh, you know, have some money in reserve for technology that we have not had to go into yet because of the other grants.
Okay, so I is.
And in-house money.
Okay, so I assume that all the parents who went out and got Christmas Chromebooks for their children, um, because they didn't get them in time. Um, those Chromebooks will go to other students in need um, further down the line.
Yeah, sure. Yes. Uh, uh, how we manage the universal type apps and, and how we, and that's something that the finance committee talked to about how we service public Chromebooks versus our own is, is something that we are working with absolutely.
Okay. And the second question, which is near and dear to my heart, and Tyler actually spoke to you uh, back a while ago. Um, was the, um, the, are there any plans? I heard you talk about um, plans for in-person, out-of-person, but for fans to be able to attend events. But um, are there any plans for home game attendees for the Hopkin and John Stock Harky team? Because they're really, they're really needing some love. Um, they got to have their senior night, which was fine, but they only have a few more games left. And who, who does that choosing? Is it because we're, our home game is that um, Trytown and Trytown has the news around everyone's neck and won't allow anyone to attend? Is that why no home fans are allowed there for us?
Yes, Dan and I and Chris talked about that today and it's Dan communicated that that is the rinks guideline. It's their requirement. Um, it's not like, obviously Tammy, it's not our, our school, but yes, um, we have to abide by the rank. And um, not to pass the buck, but, but John Stark is the school of record. John Stark would send, because uh, they are the lead school. Um, so they develop the policies and practices. So they develop the policies and practices. We are not the lead school in hockey.
Right, yeah, I was, I, I think because Hopkinton has a tighter rein that the hockey players from Hopkinton can't go to school. I thought a lot of the John Stark players are thinking that it's, it's Hopkinton that has the reins on who gets to attend and who doesn't get to attend as far as fans. So I guess I, I would like clarification just to make sure that I can explain that to my senior grandson.
Drop Dan reach out to you.
Okay.
And then, and then Tammy, just, just so, I just want to be clear, we didn't tonight allow and all our games for fans to be, it was for the next week for senior night for two parents for seniors to be able to attend the game. So I just, I just want to clarify, that wasn't for all games or for, you know, so just, just.
No, no, I understood it was for basketball. Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. So I'm not seeing any additional hands for public comment. Except for now I do. Sarah, Matt and Dustin. Hi, Sarah.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I will not need three minutes. 517 Dustin Road. I just wanted to say thank you so much for the discussion about the additional intervention at Harold Martin focusing on grades kindergarten and first, congratulations, Michelle, for what sounds like an amazing piece of work there. And it was just, it was a great discussion. So happy to hear so much concrete planning for what we're gonna do about these kiddos. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, and with that, I am going to end or close the public comment portion of the meeting and we're gonna move into action items. So bear with me one sec. All right, is there a motion for the Hopkinton School? Well, we already did that one, excuse me. I was starting at the top and I'll have to. All right, is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve a revised contract? Of 1.0 to 0.72 FTE for Harold Martin School Instructional Assistant Jessica Gregory? Start date to be determined by the superintendent of schools.
So moved. Someone else has to get off mute in a second.
Second, I'll second, I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Goupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Frame, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes, that motion passes. Is there a motion for the Hopkins in School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to accept a $2,000 donation from Oz Ram for Hopkinton Robotics Team?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome.
All right, Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Frame, yes.
Norm?
Norm Goupel, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. Is there a motion for the Hopkins in School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to accept a $500 donation from Hopkinton Rotary Club for Hopkinton Robotics Team?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you again.
I'm not hearing any. Norm?
Norm Goupel, it's a yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Frame, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes.
Jim, on the, the superintendent action item, I don't, I think we all voted yes, but I don't think we actually read the action item.
Seth made, Seth made a motion and Seth's motion was seconded. It was, it was pretty close to what is typed there.
All right, just wanted to make sure we're doing what we gotta do.
I think we covered that, right, Steve? I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it was pretty close. If, if, you hired him.
Sorry, I made it up as I went along, sorry. I felt the moment, it felt right, I'm sorry.
It's all good.
And Rob, thanks for bringing that up. Just want to make sure. Yeah, that'd be a bad one to screw up. All right, is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to accept the superintendent's nomination of Melanie Hibbard Instructional Assistant Harold Martin School pending final approval of the superintendent? Start date to be determined by the superintendent of schools.
Moved.
Second. Oh, that'd be.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Oh, Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Frame, yes.
And Norm?
Norm Goupel, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is yes. So we do have a need to go into non-public and I believe the only item I have is Steve's a personnel item. Is, is there an additional item?
No, I, no, I didn't know if there were any update on this student issue, but we certainly don't have to. There's not much news.
Okay, and so we're going under A for personnel. And then I would just also state that I'd like to do a non-meeting. And so just on negotiations, I just, it's not something we have to post because it's a non-meeting, which I know is kind of a weird term. But I just wanted to let, to let, you know, everybody know that we would also be going into a non-meeting on negotiations. So with that, I would ask if there is a motion to go into non-public session for the discussion of matters per RSA 91A colon 3. Roman 2A for personnel.
So moved.
This motion's been made and seconded. So Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Frame, yes.
Norm?
Norm Goupel, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. So we will go into non-public. I, you all should have a link for the non-public session. So when we, when we leave adjourned here, we can go over it to the non-public. And so with that, I want to thank everybody for spending a good part of their evening with us tonight. And wish everybody well and we'll come back in two weeks for our next meeting, but appreciate it very much. Have a wonderful night. Thanks, Mia and Juliette and Michelle.